This will now be recorded.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, May 12th, 2020. Please rise for a moment of silence. Will I have the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice. All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, you can.
If you give me a moment, let me clean up the audio, then call the roll.
Sure.
All right.
You ready?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Fish Prime?
Here.
Laughlin?
Here.
Marone? Morgenstein?
Here.
Chertel?
Here.
Tada?
Here.
Testa?
Here.
Dandry?
Here.
Chairman Savoni?
Here.
Mayor Dickinson?
Here.
Jim Boz?
Present.
Attorney Farrell, Senior? Attorney Farrell, are you present?
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's it. And if someone could let me know if Joe Marone joins the call, please, maybe Tom?
Yep, I'll text.
Thank you. Okay, great.
All right, before we get on to the business on the agenda, I'd like to read an announcement. Members of the public, those of you who are participating via computer and camera, please keep all of your microphones muted during the meeting unless you're the person who is asking a question. Also, if possible, keep your camera inactive unless you're speaking. The system does not deal well at all with multiple simultaneous speakers. The audio from only one person will come through at a time. Therefore, please only speak if you have been recognized. Additionally, if you were in a volley with a presenter or something like that, please let the presenter finish what he or she is saying before you respond. The, the audio just cuts out one person or the other, it becomes very choppy. So please be mindful that only one person speak at a time. I don't have a traditional gavel at my workstation, I don't need one. This system allows me to mute all participants. So if people are not participating respectfully, I'll be forced to mute also the person who has the floor can be heard. We're going to go through the agenda in order. And when we are done with the agenda for the regular town council meeting, I will adjourn the regular town council meeting, I'll pause the recording, give everybody a chance to stretch their legs or fill their water glass. And we'll resume at that point to go on with the budget special meeting that's scheduled for after this. So with that, can I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve or accept consent agenda items A through E and F as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes. Item four, there are no items removed from the consent agenda. Onto item five. Mr. Civitelli, are you with us?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. So thank you, everybody, for giving me a few minutes to talk and update the community on the current situation with COVID-19. In the past, we've talked more about the operational side of town. But at this point, I have enough material and data to actually share more concrete information about where we are as a town. So I'm going to focus on that for the first portion of this, and then I was just going to talk about a few other things. As of today, we have 354 cases here in town. Thirty-nine fatalities. Thirty-eight of those fatalities were from long-term care facilities, and one was a community fatality. So statistically, 97% of our fatalities in Wallingford are from long-term care facilities, which was obviously very alarming for us. When we're broke down, the case differentiation between community cases and long-term care cases, we started back in March through yesterday for data. We have 183 long-term care facility positive COVID cases and 171 community cases at this point. So that represents roughly 53% of our total caseload is from long-term care facilities, and 47% are community cases. The way the data broke down, we looked at March, April, and May. March had started off with more community cases than long-term care cases. We had 47 cases total in March, and 40 of those were in the community, and seven were from long-term care. April, obviously, as we've all heard about the, the peaking and the ascending and descending of the epidemiologic curve, we had 260 total cases reported in April. 138 of those were from long-term cares, and 122 were from the community. Fortunately, at this point, I could report some good news in that we've had to date so far in May, 47 reported cases. Forty of those are long-term care and seven in the community. So there's a drastic drop in our community levels in terms of, of positive cases. So that's just statistically few of the numbers that we've able, been able to compile at this point with the information available to us on the electronic surveillance system. Going more into statistics and data, we were looking at long-term what the impact could be to our community. And there's a value known as the R0 value. And not to get too technical, but basically that value represents the number of new infections estimated to stem from a single case. So an example, influenza typically for every one person infected infects 1.38 people, so well-known number. And what we're seeing now is roughly for every COVID, one COVID-19 case, and again, this is still very early on in the data, we're seeing between 4.7 to 6.6 people infected. So that kind of puts you in the middle spectrum, measles for every one person infected impacts 12 to 18 people. So it kind of gives you a spread of what we're looking at. So it's more infectious, meaning that it spreads easier than influenza, but not to the point where it's measles. So we're trying to equate this to other things we've seen in public health before. Just shifting gears a little bit. As I'm sure you could all imagine, with the reopening of Connecticut, we've had a, the demand has gone up significantly for our office. Obviously, at this point, we license all the food service facilities and nail facilities and hair, and hair salons in town. There was a lot of questions early on last week about what that was going to look like. As of Friday, that guidance was provided by the governor's office, and we've, we've adapted to that and provided that information to our facilities, and our goal is to try and to get them up and operational as easily as possible. We're trying to make things easier for them so that they could function and back, get back to the businesses that we're used to seeing here in town. So we have guidance that was provided to all our operators on Monday, clarifying some of the guidance that was sent out by the governor's office. We continue our weekly PPE pickup in North Haven. And that PPE pickup, just to remind everybody, we are responsible for picking up the PPE for urgent care centers, primary care physicians, dialysis centers, and home health agencies. So any materials we receive, our office distributes that and delivers it to those facilities within town limits. More recently, we've been spending more time working with youth and social services on the impact to our residents, not just on the health side, but beyond that, the social service part. With the increasing unemployment rate and the impact that that may have, well beyond the virus, we're trying to evaluate now to see what type of demand we may see in the coming months. So we've been meeting more to discuss those matters more recently. Of other concerns to people as of recently in the communities, the COVID recovery unit at Quinnipiac Valley Center, that actually officially became a functioning unit on Friday, this past Friday. However, at this point, they do not have any residents in that 30-bed unit. There was some question initially as to whether or not it was going to be an acute step-down unit, and then it shifted more towards taking the population of Quinnipiac Valley Center because they had an increase in cases. What it ended up finishing as was a 30-bed unit, acute step-down. And those 30 beds will be served by two nurses. The ratio was one nurse to 15 clients, and those are designated nurses for that particular section of that facility. So that's the latest information we were able to obtain as of this morning for that staff. The two nurses are already there on site before they've even had one person admitted to that facility. We're expecting some people to be admitted to that unit this week. And then the last thing I just wanted to touch on, again, not to take up too much time, but we are in the early stages of planning for mass vaccinations. One of the primary roles of the health department in a pandemic is to prepare for vaccinations of large, large groups of people, primarily town residents. We have pandemic plans that we've had for many years, but all those pandemic plans are always based on having a vaccine available. So at this point in time, we're trying to guesstimate, just like everybody else, when a vaccine may be available. But in the meantime, we're just going to try and plan accordingly to make sure that when that vaccine is available, we're ready to distribute it as, as necessary to our residents. So that's where we are as of today. Again, we anticipate spending a considerable amount of time with our food service operators and our hair salons, trying to get them up and running. Between those two demographics, we have over 400 facilities in town that we license, and there's been, justifiably so, a lot of questions about how this is going to look for their facilities. So again, our goal is going to be to try and help them out as best we can to get them up and running again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. That 350-something number we started with at the beginning, is that a cumulative number?
Correct, that is a cumulative number. So the assumption would be is that many of those cases from early April and March have, have recovered. So we're trying to ascertain what the total number of recoveries is, because that's really the number that's of concern to us at this point. But the assumption would be if it's not a fatality as of right now, we know that people are in the recovering stage, or the hope is that.
Yeah, that, that's what I was curious about, whether or not we were able to track the, the recoveries that didn't result in a negative result.
The way the system defines it is it actually puts in not recovery, but survival. And it was confusing to us as to what that actually meant. So when we had asked the Department of Public Health what survival meant in the electronic system, they couldn't really answer me that question. So there's some, so again, we're still trying to ascertain what the recovery numbers are.
Okay. Before we move on, I just want to finish my announcement for the benefit of the public. With each agenda item, I will go to the council first, and then when going to the public for comment or question, I will look for comments or questions from those who are participating digitally or via computer. And then after that, I will unmute the callers via telephone to see if there are any telephone callers who have questions. And then if you look at one, either the right or left corner of your screen, you will see a text bubble. If you click on that text buzz, bubble, that, that is a chat bar. And I'd appreciate it if you're on a computer, if you could let me know if you would like to speak by sending me a message in the chat bar. And so we have questions from Councilors Dandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think I got a partial answer, but I'll, maybe I'll just ask it straightforward. So is, is there, is there a reason why we can't get those straightforward recovered numbers? And I, and I guess my question stems from, you know, I, I'm following worldwide numbers, and I'm following United States numbers, and we've got recovery rates. But the state of Connecticut, for whatever reason, and I think by proxy of that, you know, we at Wallingford, because we're probably driving some of our numbers from the state, we can't get those numbers. And, and I'd like to know how many people are recovered, because I think there's been just as important and critical and as, as, you know, and serious as this situation is, I think we need to be also looking towards what, what are the number of people that are recovering from this? And is there any way to get that information even weekly?
Yes, thank you, Councilors Dandry. We, we are actively trying to get those numbers and, and to try and look at it from, that's why we tried to break it down by month, just to try and highlight the progression as to how the caseloads are dropping significantly. So, and going from 122 community cases for the month of April down to almost halfway through May, only having seven, there's a significant drop there. And we all know, we hear about two things in the media, they always talk about testing and contact tracing. And we all know that if you test more, you're going to find it more. But then the other question becomes is, from what I'm seeing from the governor's conference call today, was the positive test rate is roughly around 9%, which is down from 18%. So that tells me the background level in the state is dropping significantly, and that as expected, as we've talked about, I think in our first council meeting, when you have that epidemiologic curve, as a outbreak rises, it will fall. So, and again, we're seeing that fall now. But I think to your point, we are going to, we are actively trying to find those numbers out, because those are important case numbers. Because 354 is cumulative, it doesn't really represent where we are today as a community, which is why we tried to break it out more by month.
Right, exactly, thank you for that. And then maybe just as an add-on, I know, I know there have been some portable testing centers, you know, like they, they spring them up, and, you know, I know a lot of them are centered on emergency responders and essential workers and so forth. But if we ever reach a, a point where either there's more testing available and/or if we, if, if there are appointment times that are made available for people that just want to get testing done, if we have the ability to communicate that, you know, I know I would appreciate that. I, I think a, a portion of where we are, where we are all stuck on this is there, there are many people that may have been, you know, they talk about all these asymptomatic people that may have caught it and recovered from it, never really got sick at all. Or maybe they got mildly sick and recovered from it as well. These people not only are less likely, just short of mutation of, of passing it to somebody else or getting sick again, they, they can actually go out and donate platelets to try to foster helping people that are sick. And there's no way to know from any of those people, because there's no way to get any testing. So if we, it's a picking any egg type thing. So as we get maybe more of that information available, could you, you know, release it to us or let us know so that we could pass it along or even bring it up during these meetings?
Sure, that's not a problem. My understanding is that one of the governor's goals as part of the May 20th reopening date was to have roughly 40,000 tests a week performed. So in what form that is, I'm not sure how, how that was going to look. But at this point, with that, something like that does become available to us as a town, we'll definitely look at that.
Sure, and just, and one more add-on to that. I, I want to make sure that we clearly communicate to people, because again, there may be more need and demand for first responders and essential workers, regular people that are just more interested, or maybe they're going to start going back to work and would like to know. They're, they're, they should consider themselves a secondary tier and not get in the way of the people that need the tests.
Understood.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. While Counselor Chertel is next, Counselor Morgenstein indicated to me that she has information that addresses Counselors Dandry's question.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the urgent care that I work in this week began doing antibody testing. And this is a blood draw, and people can do it whether they think they were ill or not. It's an FDA-approved test. I will tell you, it's purely anecdotal, but of the 50 or so results that I saw come across my desk this week, and if we presume that two-thirds of those people thought they had some sickness sometime between December and now, one test was antibody positive. So this thought that we will gain any information as to whether we've had COVID and we now can donate plasma, or whether we now can take away our precautions. Again, 50 or 60 results coming across my desk became my routine all week long to say, you have a negative antibody, you are not immune, you need to continue to take precautions. And even the one positive, we have to say, you might have been exposed to COVID-19, but this might just be positive for a coronavirus. So our recommendation is that you continue to take precautions. So as of right now, antibody testing, it's out there, not highly useful. We are still doing COVID-19 testing on outpatients. And yes, we're not seeing the same rate of positives. But there's also false negatives, and if I think you had COVID-19, I'm still quarantining you for 14 days, three days beyond resolution of your illness, whichever is longer. So I just, yeah, I wanted to share that info. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chertel, you're up.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gina, can we quarantine Craig, or he has to have COVID, forget it, forget that. Anyway, Mr. Civitelli, are we trying to flatten the curve or bend the curve? And I ask this because when this all started, my understanding was we were trying to give the hospital, give, give the country time to build up hospital capacity. ICU beds, ventilators, we didn't have that. And so that's what all this was doing. It wasn't necessarily to prevent, because as you stated earlier, the, the disease is much more contagious than the regular flu. But I feel like now, as I read, you know, just read things, and now it's, it's shifting almost, like, well, we have to, we have to bend the curve, people just can't get this. And I understand the most vulnerable people, vulnerable people, we don't want getting it with pre-existing conditions and, and the elderly. But, but I guess I feel like, and I never hear, the other part of my question is, I never hear about hospital capacity in the news. I never, I never hear any kind of data for Connecticut or for our county. How many beds are open in mid-state? How many beds are open at Yale? They set up all these other hospitals, these other triage places, where, you know, how many are occupied, how many are, are free? Can you shed light on any of this that I'm asking, or am I just not making sense? I don't know.
No, I, yes, Counselor Chertel, I understand your question. So in flattening the curve or bending it, I think the terminologies are somewhat interchangeable. The methodology, I think, was at the time in that it was a novel virus, we didn't know a lot about it. So they wanted to have time to react to the situation. So what they did was, is in seeing how the infection rate was spreading very quickly, they said, okay, well, if we, if we close society to a certain extent and isolate people from this, it won't have the ability to spread at that pace. And then what in turn would happen is you would have fewer infections, fewer hospitalizations, which I think we've seen the decline in hospitalizations primarily in Fairfield County over the past week. And I know, I think we're on almost day 17 or 18 of hospitalizations dropping in Connecticut. I know they were looking for roughly 20 days of hospitalizations dropping in order to open up on the 20th. And I think we're getting close to meeting that metric. But to a certain extent, when you're bending the curve, I don't know if you're really, you're almost changing the date to a certain extent, and when people may get this. Because if you reopen, say, three or four months later, you still have that potential. Now, thankfully, we may not have that same potential that we did early on because we have a better understanding of the knowledge of the virus, we know how to prevent it, we have a lot more precautionary steps in place, so it could help stop the spread. So yeah, I think there was a mixed bag at the beginning of, as to how they were going to try and combat this. I don't know if that somewhat answers your question.
It, no, it definitely, it definitely does. Do you have any data on hospital, on hospital capacity in Connecticut? Or is that being reported anywhere, and I'm just missing it?
It is being reported on WebEOC, which is a,
Okay.
It's a launch page that we have access to in local health, and the fire departments and emergency managers have access to. And we could see capacity for hospitals. And I could tell you more recently, the hospital capacities have been better. And I think having these acute step-down facilities, they have the ability to actually take people out of the hospital quicker to a step-down unit, so you don't have to take up all those beds in the hospital. And I think, and this is my, this is just my summation, is that they're going to keep these facilities for the time being through the fall in anticipation of a potential fall wave. But again, we don't really know at this point if we're going to see that fall wave. So I guess we're just going to have to wait and see. I have my suspicions, you know, we all see a lot in the media, but we're going to have to take this a day at a time and see what may or may not happen. Again, this is a novel virus, so we could probably try and anticipate based on past viruses and their trends. But again, we don't really know moving forward what's going to happen, or even if, how the length of time for them to obtain a vaccine. And again, like the influenza vaccine, what's the efficacy of that vaccine, depending on what gets devised? So again, there's still a lot of questions up in the air, and, and, you know, I could definitely find, follow up with you on that information for the hospitals.
No, you don't have to, you gave me what I needed to know. I'm just glad that, that you have access to that data. I just felt like it's, it's not, I don't see it in the, the commonly reported data in, in the news, and I thought that was the whole point. So, um, so thank you, I appreciate everything you're doing, and thank you for the update. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Chertel.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments on Mr. Civitelli's report from the council? For later rivals, if you would like to make a public comment, a comment as a member of the public, please look for the text bubble, click on that, below that will appear a chat bar. Please type into the chat bar that you would like to make a comment. And I see nothing in the text, and that, no chat text messages. I'm just going to check the telephone. Anybody who has called in via telephone would like to ask Mr. Civitelli a question. All right, Mr. Civitelli, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you, too. Moving along the agenda on to item six, can we have a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that we approve a bid waiver for Safewear in the amount of $11,000. I move that we approve a bid waiver for a safe wear in the amount of $11,787 for facial masks for the fire department.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right. Seconded by Counselor Chertel. Chief Hyde Guard, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. What can you tell us?
So this is our fourth request for purchasing personal protective equipment. And just to give a brief synopsis of the four purchases. The first one was for N95, which is the high level mask. That was a bulk purchase with some other first responding agencies to get high on the list to fulfill that order. That was an initial purchase. The second purchase that we've made was for surgical masks, gowns and face shields. And that was through this same vendor, SafeWare. We made a third purchase. Then we thank you for the third one mostly, because the third purchase was for a respirator, P100 that our first responders are using just for the fire department use. So out of these, and then the purchase at hand tonight for your consideration is for surgical masks, 15,000 more. While these all seem like we're just disjointed and we're building, just following up as needs come along, there is some madness or method to our madness in that all these masks are being used for different purposes. We're supplying other town departments through the health department. We're also supplying healthcare facilities, augmenting what's now been come, have become available through the Department of Public Health. There's been a effort to give masks through the state a pass through, if you will, to businesses. As well as we're building a bank for a town pod that Director Civitelli mentioned. So that is in case there's a vaccination for this COVID issue. It could also be a pod for any other outbreaks that may in fact happen. A normal course of events is not changed by having this COVID emergency. So we always have a pod available, could be for influenza or any other cause. Could be for a testing. So in that pod buildup, we need to have supplies for the entire town. And we've depleted that supply in our response up to this point. So part of these purchases is to start replacing that supply. So that is a simple background for what we're requesting tonight. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the council? Any questions or comments from members of the public? And any questions or comments from those on the telephone? All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you for joining.
Yes.
I didn't call your name yet, but who is that other person talking to?
Hang on a second. Let me clean up the audio. All right, Madam Clerk, if you could, please unmute yourself and call the roll.
Okay, thank you. Yes, now Fishby.
Yes.
Laughin'.
Yeah.
Marone.
Yes.
Morgenstein.
Yes.
Chertel.
Yes.
Tada.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Dandry.
Yes.
And Chairman Savoni.
Yes.
The motion passes.
And can I have a motion on item number seven?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move we approve a transfer in the amount of $11,787 from the general contingency accounts to the fire department operating expenses account.
Second.
Moved and seconded discussions or questions from the council. For the benefit of the public, this is just financing the bid waiver that we approved in item six. Any questions or comments in the public? Any questions or comments from the telephone callers? All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishby. Hello? Fishby?
He may have stepped away.
Laughin'.
Yeah, yeah.
Marone.
Yes.
Morgenstein.
Yes.
Chertel.
Yes.
Tada.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Dandry.
Yes.
Chairman Savoni.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Yes, it does. There are no items for item number eight on the agenda. We do have an addendum, which is item nine is, many of the participants know. Two weeks ago, the council voted to bond the pool. And on Friday, the mayor exercised the power to veto the vote on the bond. And this is on the agenda for the purposes of giving the council the opportunity to discuss the ability to override the veto. So first up. Anything from the council?
Well.
Actually. Counselor Marone has the floor. Counselor Testa, if you'd please let me know in the chat bar when you want to step up, that'd be helpful. Thank you. You'll have the floor next.
My apologies, Counselor Testa, I was slow on the trigger. So I'd like to make a motion that we overturn the mayor's veto of the pool project. You know, the, when this whole thing started, I don't know that I was super excited or thrilled about the pool project, but we've spent a couple of years now working on the, or our team has spent a couple of years working on the working up coming up with a plan for the pool, right? So then after several years, they give us the plan for the pool. The discussion is that it's going to move along as expected. The mayor had made no objection to it. Several weeks ago, we got an email saying that he would like us to delay, did not citing COVID-19. And then the administration or the mayor vetoes the, the pool project citing COVID-19 is the reason. Now, keeping in mind that the payments, the first payment on the pool is not going to be for at least two years. Or it's not going to be for two years. We're going to have two years, no payments. So that means that he's forecasting that two years from now, the pool is that we're not going to be in a financial situation enough to afford the pool. So the pool is going to be roughly, I think we said at the last meeting somewhere in the neighborhood of $200,000 a year for 20 years. If that's the case, I would much prefer to find other places to save $200,000 in the budget every year as a, and still have the pool. The pool, the government has an obligation to maintain parks. Right? If we're talking about closing down the linear trail or something else, everyone would go bananas. So in this case, the pool is something that a lot of people utilize. It's about families. And I just don't think that this is the time when we tell family, working families in town that you can't have the, the public pool. So for all those reasons, I move that we override the mayor's veto. And actually, I have a question for the administration. And that is, in light of the the situation with the pool, I can appreciate they're wanting to contain our expenses. Are they considering any other ideas in terms of furloughs or layoffs or anything else to reduce town expenses in light of this current crisis? Or is it just the pool that's being singled out? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, before I go to the administration for the answer to your question, I will ask the council, is there a second to Mr. Marone's motion?
Yes, there is.
Counselor Testa with a second. And Mr. Mayor, Mr. Bose, would you like to respond to that question?
Yes. Bill Dickinson here. Yeah, there, there are a lot of things being considered. We, we could very well be not moving forward with funding departments if, if the current executive orders remain in force, because there is, there is no way to provide programming with the current status. And that, all of those things are in place. I, I would say though, I think it's more than 200,000 a year. It's 500,000 the first year and it averages out at something like 400,000. That, the money you might not borrow, but you would have to be spending money on it. And then we reimburse ourselves for the borrowing during construction. Whoever's constructing needs, needs to be paid on an ongoing basis. Oh, there is a use of cash that occurs as soon as construction starts. All spending by the town is, is under a microscope. And again, we have to feel our way because of the nature of this. Will things really reopen the 20th? From everything I've seen, it's going to be a very minor reopen. And uppermost certainly in my mind at this point is that as of April, there are close to 400,000 unemployed in Connecticut. In April, it reached some, something over 3,000 people in the town of Wallingford who were unemployed. Those, those figures are very sobering. I, I, at this point, don't see a quick end to this COVID pandemic, which has necessitated closing of businesses. And I think we have to prepare for that and we have to do it immediately.
All right, thank you. Next, I have Counselors Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I'd like to start with, you know, first I, I'd like to start with a number of people that have, I, I've been able to communicate with and talk to about this. Now, a lot of times we'll sit up here when we're talking about one of the items on the agenda, and I've talked to people and the people that I've talked to. And the problem with something like that is that always ends up being, you know, the people you know, the people in your circles. Well, when this, when this went down, and I was actually expecting it. When this went down and we got the veto in, I basically put a poll up on the Wallingford News and Information Group out on Facebook. And we've gotten in three days, 500 responses on it, over 500. So when I, when I say that, you know, I've gotten the information from a number of people in the way they felt. We've got a good cross section. I made sure that this survey could only be answered once. People could only choose one of the three answers that were there, and they couldn't add any additional answers. And I actually added two no answers to it. I said, for the one no answer, don't override the veto and, and let's take a look at it next year. The other one was, no, don't override the veto and let's just figure something else other than community pool. Abandoned community pool is a town service and let's do something else. Because I didn't want to box in the people that were against this into a simple yes or no thing. Obviously, the people that want the pool want to see this thing recovered. Combined, all the no answers were 206 against doing this override, and there were 332 that support it. On top of that. On top of that, that's very important. It's three to two. We've elected the mayor on smaller numbers. What's, what's percentage wise, ratio wise. What, what's very important here is not only just that. I, I can't recall a time in my personal history, serving on the council, receiving the amount of electronic messaging in support of something that I tried my darndest to respond independently and individually. I got to the point where I couldn't do it anymore. The last 22 people that I responded to were, were put on the BCC. And I had to respond simply because I simply ran out of time to do it. And if I missed anybody that wrote us a letter, wrote us an email, I apologize. I intended to answer every single one that I could. I, I want to come back to just the financials first, just the numbers. Because I, I took the time to call Jim Bose today to make sure that I had all my numbers correct. As it stands right now. If we were to restore this, we were to overturn this veto and, and run this budget, provided that we actually borrowed the entire amount, we bonded out the entire amount that we approved. We don't always do that. We pay some cash. Sometimes costs come in less, continuously built in, so on. Just a flat description of borrowing everything. It is $25.39 in additional taxes on the median, median assessed homeowner. And this will not be on your next tax bill, July 1, 2020. That would be in July 1, 2021. So we talk about, gee, this isn't the year to do it. From a, from a tax standpoint or a pressure on the taxpayer standpoint, it won't even hit them. What's going to be in the next budget on July 1, 2020 is $3. That is the original appropriation which we already approved. What, what got vetoed the other day was the add-on, the supplemental, the additional $6.8 million or whatever it was to add on top of the 625, which was already passed. The 625, the 625,000 that was already passed, that will be in your July tax bill. That is $3 for the median homeowner in Wallingford. Everything else starts $25.39 on July 1, 2021. I want to make sure everybody understands that. Secondly. This goes down. The tax burden decreases in 2023 to $23.56 and it will go down. The bond rates for this right now stand somewhere between 2% and 2.75%. These are some of the lowest rates that we can borrow against, that we've seen in Wallingford in the past 10 years. All of the other bond debt that we're carrying right now runs somewhere between 3 and 3.75%. And our heaviest burden are maybe our worst case burden right now in bond debt that we carry is 4%. So this is somewhere between a 50% discount or so to other debt that we've got. Beyond the financials. I want to just talk about the facts. The ability to borrow at these rates is almost never going to be this low again. The ability to get all of the, the materials at the rates we're getting is, is probably never going to be lower. A lot of these materials are petroleum based. Whether it's the fuel that runs in the engines for the equipment, the diesel generation, whatever they need, the blasters, the pressure, pressure hoses, all the stuff that they're going to run. The materials they put down, asphalt's got petroleum based products in them. These, these prices right now are about as rock bottom as they're going to get. I don't know that we'll ever see petroleum prices this low, maybe in our lifetimes, not unless there's a huge switch over to alternative fuels that basically makes them invaluable. You're never going to see a convenience season like this ever again. Before this entire coronavirus situation took place. We were going to quote unquote damage an otherwise good season. We were basically saying, look, it's, we're going to sacrifice a good season at community pool to get, get us where we've got to go. Even if we were going to sandblast the bottom of that pool, paint it again and fill it up with water. And the state said, you know, hey, June 1st, every single restriction is gone. I guarantee you, people personally won't go out. And they won't engage and they won't want to congregate. And that will plummet sales of the pool passes. Anyway, we would be better served to close it anyhow. There's also the willingness of contractors to bid very tightly. They, they are looking for the work for their employees, they're looking for the work for their businesses. This is going to be the year you're going to get those types of bids in. We'll probably never have this type of a buyer's market again, unless there's some other type of disaster like this one or a natural recession, because what's occurred is not natural. I want to wrap all this up by saying that it is definitely in times like these, when you need to have a positive thing to look forward to. There's already enough doom and gloom and things that are going bad and people have to look to possibly go back And people have to look to possibly go back to work in conditions that maybe are not the most ideal for them. They're dealing with coming off unemployment and not everybody is making more money on unemployment. Some people are going back to work to reduce hours, which is just going to affect them. There's the presence of mind that there's still a bunch of uncertainty in global markets, our own supply chains, and about the very immediate future for everybody. This is a very positive beacon that we can well afford to take a gamble on now because it's not even going to hit our tax bill for another full year and another full cycle. And if not now, then when? When are we going to do something like this? I really hope that my fellow counselors can support the action to overturn this veto. Thank you.
Counselor Testa, you're next on the list.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry, I didn't reply to your red chapter. I didn't see it.
It's okay.
I'm actually going to keep it short, uncharacteristically. I have made the statement publicly and in social media that it's hard to deny that the optics of this project can be problematic. We are going to do everything in our power as a group, I already know, to try to get a zero tax increase in our budget. That will require some tough decisions, but it's something we should be able to achieve, or at least get darned close to. We acknowledge the economic realities that everybody is faced with today. And it can seem pretty strange in these times to say, hey, I've got a great idea. Let's go spend $7 million on a pool. And there's the sarcastic cynical way of presenting this and talking about it publicly. It doesn't sound good. It sounds irresponsible, sounds crazy. Some people are still of the assumption that we're taking this money out of reserves and paying cash for the pool, so on and so forth. We should make clear that we're not doing that. But there's no way to dispute that in two years, we will have a budget line item of approximately $500,000 going up and down for the next 20 years. It'll drop, of course, down to about three, but we've got a half a million dollars added into our budget. And we will have to face that in two years. I am not of the opinion that we are in such straits that we will not be in totally different straits then. I don't know where we're going to be in two years. Nobody does. But I'm fairly confident we are going to be well on our way to recovering from this, if not already having recovered from it. And, but like anything else, it'll be a difficult decision, budgetary decision. But the most important thing to consider is that it is a planned budget decision. I have advocated bonding on capital projects because it's something, the expense then becomes something you can plan for and budget for every year, just as you do with known salary expenses and so forth, as opposed to spending chunks of money or increasing taxes for that. So I think we can plan for this. I think we can responsibly manage it and handle it. And every year, that's when we can make the difficult decisions, if there are any, about, well, what do we cut? Maybe we can't spend that 100,000 or 50,000 on this capital item this year because we still have this, you know, our bonding expenses. And lastly, keep in mind, we've had a bonding line item for as long as we've all been alive. And it goes up and down. It's on its way down nicely now, but it's always there. Again, it's something we plan for. And as our bonding totals are reduced, you know, we can manage having that portfolio increased a little bit. So that's just a financial argument. I am wholeheartedly in support of the project for the simple fact that it is a community resource that so many people have great memories of. It's important to a lot of people. Parks recreation, the public good, those are the things we have to keep supporting. We can't shy away from when things get a little difficult. We've been planning this for years. So when people make the argument, gee, maybe we should step back and look at a pared-down version. We've been doing that for two years. Where were those questions then? And also, why not with a different location? I've seen a lot of things argued. Those things are not for today. Because if that just means we push it down another year, we pare it down a little, we're still bonding a large project in a year or two. And frankly, if things are going to be as bad as some people are afraid they're going to be, we'll never do it then. We can do it now and plan for it. And lastly, I think it's more than just a pool. It's going to be another new park. It's going to be a destination. And I just feel so confident, and I don't believe I'm naive here, that next year, rolling into the summer, as society has gotten back on their feet and we've been moving along in whatever manner we find we need to, that's going to be just such a welcome place for so many Wallingford people, such a respite from what we've been going through. It'll be like having a new parade every day. So I think we need to look forward and look deep inside and say, what are we here for? We can do this responsibly. And this is one of those things where we should take a stand and follow our convictions that we had in voting for this in the first place. And with all due respect to the chief executive's decision on this one, that's why we have the option to override a veto. That just requires a little extra thought on all of our parts. So much for speaking for a short period of time. Thank you.
Counselor Morganstein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, so as Jason had stated, there has been a very large outcry regarding support of this project. I also tried to keep up with the emails and people are attending tonight's meeting as part of their support as well. One of the people that I heard from early on is someone from the commission prior to this most recent one. And a few of the things that he points out is that we had done three times in the last 30 years, studies for this pool. And as I had mentioned at our last meeting, when we voted to support the 625,000, this most recent commission, a much shorter time period, came up with a very good plan that is not simply a pool, but rather a destination. The project that I support, and I hope we do, seven to two override the mayor's veto and fully support this, is a community project that is bringing a project to Wallingford that will not only fill the community pool space, but it will put in that space a destination, a replacement for a pool that cannot be remedied. This latest study, Mr. Savinelli and the rest of that group, fully discover you cannot replace that, you cannot replace the bathhouse, you cannot use so many things the way they are. We have violations in that park. If we bring this project to Wallingford, this becomes a destination at a time when our town is going to be needing that help, having a destination. So you've reopened the restaurants, you've reopened the vineyards. People are wanting to either move to Wallingford or open a business in Wallingford. And they're going to look and they're going to say, do we have a destination with a pool and all of the amenities with the splash pad and that whole place? Or do we have another eyesore? Do we have another wooden caplin that, once the administration put down and says, no, that project isn't going, we now have this empty blighted area? We actually, as stated, are at a time where financially, we're going to actually get this done for a better price. Let's offset the amounts that it's going to take every year for people's taxes, $25. Take it out of, you know, the budget each year moving forward. Let's offset it, sure. But to pull the plug on this, just cannot happen. It's heartbreaking to imagine that it could. I became a counselor because I attended meetings and found that we spend good money after bad. We studied a golf course in the 80s. We've twice before studied this pool. And if we've made now a third time of study, we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayer money to get nothing. And we need something now really more than ever. So we need a seven to two to override this. I hope that my fellow counselors can see clear to please do that. It's what this town needs. Thank you.
Counselor Laffin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and everybody else. So, yeah, Counselor, I agree with a lot of what everybody else has said before. And I've responded to every message I received as of 2:00 this morning or whatever. I'm sorry, I don't think I got to very many people today, if there were any that I got to. But, and I'm still, and just as I wrote in those messages, I'm still kind of, I'm on the fence, like literally right now. And I don't know that it matters because it was three against before. And unless somebody changes, I don't know. So all of this is just me needing to be comfortable with where I am and why. So, you know, I grew up using the pool. I do not have a pool. I've never had a pool. I learned how to swim in the community pool. I learned how to swim in the previous community pool, which looked exactly like the one now without the slide. It was just the previous, before we redid the filtration system and repaved and stuff like that. But even then, there were issues. I remember a couple of times I had to cancel class, which I was relieved at because I was a horrible swimmer, because the conditions of the water weren't good. One time climbing out of the water, like the green algae kind of like slime, like pulled off my skin as I was climbing up on the zero entry, exhausted from my laps. I grew up with it. And I know it's important. My kids have been there. I've had passes. I did not have a pass last year, or I don't think the year before. But my kids have, and I use it. So I'm not one of the people that has the pool in my backyard. And I'm still uncertain. Right now, I'm listening to everybody, looking to like for the magic light bulb that's going to push me over one way or the other. You know, in the last council meeting, I voted for the additional bonding because I believe in this project. I believe in all the work that the Park and Rec Commission has done. I believe in all the work that the Park and Rec Pool Committee has done. I've met with John Gollis before. I talked to commissioners on the phone in my free time. You know, this is something that I've been advocating for, was not planning for a global pandemic to conflict with my financial conservancy. The timing's bad. And I'm trying to balance out, how should I feel about that? So I did support the project. I did vote to, I was part, I seconded it, to postpone the decision on the bonding because of all of this. So I'm kind of that middle person that they talk about on Facebook. I want the project, but I want a couple of months to decide. So I'm stuck. Is this my chance for the couple of months that I lost before? And people that have watched or paid attention before know that, you know, usually typically when we go to battle over little things and I lose a motion like the tabling or the postponing or an amendment, then I lost and I move on and I look at the bigger picture. And that's what I did two weeks ago. But then here comes another opportunity that I'm really wrestling with. But at the same time, it's not at all clear to me. And I've talked to people on the phone and I've read emails. And the volume of the emails is wonderful. I like seeing people involved and caring. I'm looking for individual specific arguments to kind of like trip me over the line. And I'm still sitting here now at 7:37 looking for that final argument to go either way. So I support the project. I want to postpone, wrestling with it all now. I'm torn. I'm torn on the whole override thing. And this isn't like a political thing. The mayor didn't call me the strong army. Vinnie Servoni didn't call me the strong army. This isn't that at all. And in fact, you know, unjustly then, I feel like I got to vote against, you know, or against the veto, just to prove to everybody that that's not what this is. And that's not right either. That's not how I do anything. It's really just trying to juggle, what is the right thing to do right now? And, you know, I think about, if this was my house that I was going to have to buy a pool for, you know, even if I put a deposit down, like we put the $625,000 down on, would I proceed or would I hold off, given the option? And I would probably hold off. But at the same time, like you're talking about, we're rolling the dice. Jason said we're gambling. I made the rolling the dice reference two weeks ago, too. We're gambling on it. Do I want to gamble with $7 million of taxpayers' money? It's $25 a month, right? $25 a year, starting in a couple of years, for the next 20 years, whatever it's going to be, declining. That's not my money, though, to decide. And I always think about, like, when I used to think about the fireworks, like, I'd go door-to-door campaigning. Could I ask every single door that I knocked on for the $1.50 it was going to cost to do the fireworks? I could. But would they all give it to me? No. No, they wouldn't. And now we're talking about $25 with a compounding, you know, increase every year after. There's the emotional component. And I know I'm all over the place, but this is literally like my stream of consciousness, where I am and everything. So I'm listening to the rest of you guys. I'm listening to the three of you that spoke before me. I'm going to listen to the rest of you that speak after me. And I got to decide. And maybe it doesn't matter. Maybe the veto's going to be overridden anyway. But this is where I still am. And I'm not the type of guy to take an easy out with like, oh, I'm comfortable. It's overridden and we got more time, but I get to stay on the side of all the people that wanted the pool. It's not like that and that's not how it works. I think coming from, you know, these are some of the things I wrestle with. So coming from a construction project management background, and it's been talked about, this is the best time to build. And I read that in multiple emails. I heard it a couple of times two weeks ago. We've heard it a couple of times already tonight. That is true. However, our bids were received before COVID was really a big thing. It was just starting. Our bids were not received in the COVID time. It came just at the tail end, just at the very beginning of people starting to talk about closing states and not traveling and things like that. The fuel prices, they are super low, not a part of the quote or the bid. More businesses may be interested if it go out to bid. More businesses may have the opportunity. Better companies may have the opportunity because of other canceled projects to go out to rebid right now or in the next couple of months. There's just a lot going through my head. I know optically, it looks bad for two reasons. Counselor Testa mentioned it. We're going to spend seven and a half million dollars during a financial depression, a crisis, something that the country has not seen since the Spanish Flu and/or the Depression. And now we're talking about spending $7 million, $25 a month. But where else? I mean, here we are. We argue over fireworks for a dollar, right? We argue over cutting or shaving off the Board of Ed budget for what amounts to several dollars, maybe. Where else do we find a lump sum like $7 million? or twenty-five dollars a house for every year after that? And that's the kind of stuff I wrestle with. But it's fun. But it's the pool. But it's emotional. But my kids don't have a pool. So I get it. And I'm there. And I want the pool. I like this project. A lot of you who even wrote to me don't even like the project. You want a bigger pool or a smaller than. You don't want the volleyball court. I don't want the volleyball court either. But other than that, I like the pool. I like the project. I'm supportive of the project, which is why I voted the way I did two weeks ago. I'm just trying to figure out the best way to get there and not lose sleep over it. You know, when I was growing up, we had the PIT crew, which was the playground in town, P I T. And they raised funds and worked on the project for that large wooden play structure that ended up going to do a little, that only, that got taken down in the last ten years or so, or more than that, whatever it was, twelve, thirteen, fourteen years ago. And I even used to say back then, because of my poor swimming lessons experiences, you know, they should have a PIT two crew. That would, and the P would be pool instead of playground. You know, other options even going forward. This is, you know, I'm thinking, if I voted for now, we'll create a PIT two crew and they can fundraise to kind of pay off the debt as we go forward. I don't know. There's a lot of things to do. You know, we've got, we got emails about Girl Scouts that are involved and want to help out. And that's all great. I'm just trying to figure out for me how to not lose sleep over this and, and get to the best solution, the easiest that we can. I've been thinking about it nonstop, especially since the last couple of days, since the veto. I'm sorry I didn't respond to people until last night. It's crazy with work and all this other stuff. And I know everybody's really concerned about this May twentieth opening that they're even talking about right now. It may not even happen, but that they're talking about right now. They're saying it's a bad idea. It's gonna not be good for the, for people's health. Then other people saying we need to boost the economy. We need to get it going. We need something in the middle. I mean, is this something we want to settle on? The timing of it, you know, so what are we looking for? What is the big reason or draw to vote yes tonight? And override the veto and whatever, and keep going forward? It's, it's timing, right? So we always knew we were gonna lose a season of the pool. It was always part of the plan. And our goal was to make that this summer, regardless of COVID. Before COVID, our goal was to make it this summer. And now we have COVID nineteen. The pool is closed, or well, it's closed anyway, but it likely would be closed for the season. So are we, are we putting all this stress and pressure and rushing on the, on the fact that we want to kind of double down or double dip or use up a period of time where the pool would be closed anyway, so we don't lose any season? And that's what it mostly has started to feel like for me. It's not anybody's fault that we have the COVID nineteen thing going on. But at this point, it's seven and a half million dollars. And, and not everybody's even happy with the project. I mean, Counselor Fortell, one of the big proponents of the pool, I'm sorry, I'm citing you, has even said he doesn't love, love the plan. But this is, but he just wants to get it done. He's afraid it's not gonna happen. And that's one of my big fears too. When I look at the other things in town where there's a lot of controversy and conflict, Wedding Kaplan, Simpson Court, whatever it may be. We get, the council, not that I was on, I mean, either of those at the time, gets rolling, and then something stops it. And then it's like nothing happened. I don't want that to happen. And I, and I see that it's happened, you know, on our watch. You know, Wedding Kaplan became a parking lot, police station, whatever. I don't know in the future. Simpson Court, it's come back here and there. It keeps getting kicked around. It's very complicated, way more complicated than the pool, politically, personality wise. But so what do we do? Like, so it's on us, right? Like, if it fails, if it is vetoed, it's on us to keep the pressure. We, we don't have the authority necessarily to go out to bid ourselves without the administration. I don't know. Do we start a council construction project like we did for, for other projects in the past? Or that we, like, we created the Charter Commission? Like, I don't know. There's a lot of things to do if it doesn't work tonight. And, and, and I'm saying this because no matter what side I end up picking, whether the veto's overridden or not, if it's not, then, then we need options and we gotta go forward. And I do want to go forward with those things. And I know Mike Savinelli, at least you were on the call. Sorry, you're hidden behind. Yeah, there you are. I don't know if it's all right, Mr. Chairman, if I can ask him a question. And I, and I don't remember if it kind of came up before, but has anybody been out to the pool this year so far to see the condition? So, all right, a little background for all the viewers at home. So about a year and a half, almost two years ago, all of this work started on this plan here. We're not, the pool's not dead right now. At least, well, we walk in every year and we're not sure, right? The pool's not dead right now. It's not sustainable in the long term. You know, can we get another year or two or three? We've always talked about that being a possibility. So, Mike, I'm wondering, Mike's on the Park and Rec Commission, for everybody else. Has anybody been out to the pool now to check, like, is this, oh, yeah, we could open it? If COVID wasn't the thing, if we weren't ready for construction, could we open the pool anyway for the year? Or do we walk in and find out that the filtration system is completely rotted out and busted? That's always the fear. But do you have any, any information on that?
Well, I can tell you that based on where we are in the month of May, right now, opening the pool would be a little tougher. And it's out of the budget. We've already told the lifeguards that they're coming in. As far as the condition of the pool, we have some problems that need to be addressed. We have around the left pool, we have things falling apart that need to be fixed. And so we have been working hard not to put ourselves in that position to put good money after bad. And I, so the, you know, once we pulled the plug on the budget, we said that we knew we were gonna lose the season anyways. So that's, that's kind of where we are.
Yeah, all right. So nothing sounds like it's catastrophic. It's not, it's never good year to year anyway, right? We're always kind of patching stuff together.
Right.
And the pool's not opening, no matter what happens tonight, the pool's not opening in a month anyway because of all the COVID stuff.
The other issue is we had to do some borings in the pool to do some testing. So we had to drill some holes that we have filled in and so on, but, you know, nothing that we're overly crazy about. We need to do stuff like that to go back in and to get back into the pool. So that was done in January. We were fortunate to do it in January because we had good weather.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, so see, I'm, I'm stuck. And I'm just trying to be open and honest. And I don't mean to sound like I haven't picked a side or I'm being political or I don't have the guts to make a decision at this point. Well, I'm not gonna abstain or anything like that when the time comes, you know. I'm gonna make up my mind. But right now, I'm listening to the rest of you guys. Convinced me, I want to have a pool ready and open next spring. I also want the economy and everybody to be ready for it. I don't know that that's the case. I'm, I'm looking. I want to be convinced. I know I'm not the deciding vote on the override, but I'm just, I'm trying to see what's out there. So I don't even think I'm gonna have anything else to say tonight. I'm just gonna be listening. Thank you. I know that was probably a long time too. But thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, and everybody else, and all the people at home that have taken the time to write and be involved and be nice, even when I sent kind of a diatribe of what I just said and didn't give them a straight answer, but tried to explain my, my thoughts. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I made my points pretty clear, I thought, at the last meeting. And, you know, I've gotten all the emails over the last week or so. And, you know, it appears that a lot of people didn't watch that meeting. You know, this, the, the subject line on the emails being save the pool. You know, obviously, somebody is up there scaring people that, you know, if this doesn't happen now, the pool is going away. I don't think that's the case. I, I think that, you know, we did at the last meeting discuss other things that can't happen. You know, I was a little, I was very surprised that apparently nobody had done, nobody had brought anybody in to evaluate the current pool and to issue a report. You know, I hear, well, we've been talking about this for two years and you're just bringing it up now. Well, you would think that due diligence would have called for that a long time ago. And, you know, we are accused of micromanaging. I know I am on some occasions. And, you know, this is one occasion where I didn't micromanage. And I thought that somebody had done that. And I think it would be to the betterment of our town if that did happen. Yes, there's been a very large outcry, but certainly the outcry has not been all supportive of overriding the veto. You know, I know Jason put up a poll on Facebook, I think it was. And actually, that ratio, I mean, it's not a referendum. It doesn't have any binding. But was sort of in line with the way the vote went last week. You know, so there's a portion for and a portion against. You know, one of the, there was a comment earlier that somebody had to put some more thought into this, a little extra thought. You know, I've thought about this a lot. I like the community pool. I've supported the community pool. We bought our passes this last year. Unfortunately, we were unable to use them for the, for the year at all. We had passes the year before as well. I would like to have a nice community pool. I don't think that's the question here. Ultimately, I don't think anybody, well, I don't want to speak for, you know, other council members, but surely there have been statements that there are, there is uncomfortability with various aspects of this pool as proposed. And, you know, it appears that a portion of the support is, well, this is the best we're gonna get. Just spend the money, do it, because it's never gonna get better. And that's unfortunate because we're talking about a lot of money at a time when the town doesn't have a lot of money. People are out of work. And, you know, it would be nice to have a nice community pool for people to, to come to and to be a magnet for our town. But if you're gonna spend seven million dollars on a project, I think we all should be very, very happy with what is being proposed. You know, at the last meeting, I asked, or during the budget sessions, no, it was at the last meeting, you know, the involvement that Public Works as perhaps with this project and perhaps to save some money. You can't tell me that Public Works can't demolish that balance. And numbers should be looked into as far as what we can do using our town employees for, for those purposes. The electric, when we had the electric division come before us last week for the budget. Nobody has asked the electric division about their involvement and perhaps doing something, you know, conservation wise or something with regard to this project? I mean, I, I just, you know, once again, don't want to micromanage. But when people don't think outside the box, I'm gonna say something. You know, those are basically my comments. Most of them I made last week. I, I just wish that people had watched the meeting last week and saw what actually happened. I think that this project should be revisited. I think that, that the evaluation that we discussed last week should happen in the meantime. And then we perhaps are more informed. Because I'm gonna tell you, if, if we spend one point five million on rehabbing this pool, which, I don't know, that might be a doable number. And it lasts for ten years. I think that's a good investment for the town. You know, so that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to start off by saying I appreciate all of the opinions that were provided over the past few days. And I did receive correspondence on both sides. And I think where I'm looking at this tonight, I'm not looking at the merits of the pool project anymore. We did that at the last meeting. So that's, you know, that's not what I'm looking at tonight. I stated where, where I stood on that last meeting and the vote happened, and so that's, that's in the past. But for me, with the vote tonight about is discretionary spending at a time when a lot of economists are saying we're going into a second Great Depression. We have lost businesses in town. I'm sure we will continue to lose businesses in town. Unfortunately, I don't see that this is going to end on May twentieth. I don't see that this is going to end possibly this year or even next year. I think we're going to be facing the economic impact of this crisis for several years to come. And if we lose businesses in town and the grain list is reduced, that means that the mill rate goes up on the residential side. So the twenty-five dollars for the average household that we're discussing right now is not necessarily twenty-five dollars next year or the year after or for the next twenty-five years. The state economy is, was already bad, and because of this, is going to be even worse. We know that they're facing massive deficits. And we have seen in the past in Wallingford that when the state looks at towns of who to not give extra money to, Wallingford typically gets hit. So I would not be surprised if in the next year, in the year after, if Wallingford gets less state money. And that's something that is a very serious consideration of mine. If we lose a couple of million dollars of state money on top of the five hundred or six hundred thousand dollars that some of the councilors are saying we can find to cut from our budget to reduce the burden of this, that's, that's, I just don't think that's feasible at all. So that's a concern of mine also. When I was running for council, I said that I would work to balance the needs of the community with what we can afford. And from hearing from a lot of different people, I understand community pool is very special to a lot of people, and I'm, I'm not doting that or downplaying that. But when you're in an economic depression and people are telling me that they cannot afford their utilities, they cannot afford their mortgage, people that had great jobs, what they thought were lifelong jobs two months ago are now faced with permanent unemployment, not just temporary, permanent. Their jobs have been eliminated and they can't afford to feed their families. I just can't support this amount of discretionary spending and entering into this amount of debt knowing that people in our community are facing that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Up next, I have Counselor Shortell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, and I, I am, it's, my connection is slow, so I'm kind of bouncing in and out. So just, I don't know, wave your hands or if you stop hearing me, let me know, because I heard most of the last couple of comments, but I kept zooming in and out. I too am appreciative of everyone's comments, the, hearing the debate, and if you did watch the last meeting or the meeting on April twenty-eighth, I obviously am a big supporter of this project. And I continue to be. I especially appreciate Tom Laffin's comments for their honesty. Tom is the reason I'm up here. So you can, Tom recruited me. Tom and I are friends. And Tom is somebody that I respect a lot. And so I, what he said is often the case with me on a lot of issues. I'm not even sure a lot of times till the final vote how I'm gonna vote. So I definitely respect that perspective. And Tom, I don't know if I'll be able to convince you or not. Probably not, but I'll, I'll take a shot. I guess the first comment I would make is about the numbers. The town carries about over five million dollars in what we over $5 million in what we call debt service. So if, if you're not, debt service is all the stuff we bond. So we have all these projects. We have school roofs that we bonded. There's the library expansion from the, from the earlier 2000s. Everything, all those types of projects. We buy open space. So that all adds up. And so that's, it's like a mortgage. And so all those mortgages, think of it that way, add up. The pool would be part of that. So the pool would be lumped into the principal and interest payments for the pool over the next 20 years would be in that debt service. So when you hear, so, so the number that, uh, Billy Counselors Andrew and others have cited, in year two, not next year, uh, well, would be, it's starting in July 1 of 2021, would be $597,000. That's assuming the full amount were spent. We wouldn't know that though. Uh, that's assuming the contingency gets blown through. It'd probably be a little bit less than that, but we'll just use the worst case scenario. So if you look at that year in 2021, the total debt service that's projected for that year, not counting that, because that didn't get passed, it's about 5.4 million dollars. So you'd be adding about the, you put, you, that would, you bumped that number up to about $6 million. Um, which means we're still paying off a lot of other projects. That could be an argument for or against it. You could, you could argue both ways. It's not a large amount in the context of that debt service line. But what I will say is we, we focus on that year, that next year. What's happening in year two is a couple of these projects, and this is in our budget books, are coming off the debt service. Our debt service is actually going down by almost $400,000 in year two of what would be year two of the pool. So our debt service actually drops because the Voag project is in its last year. That's 145,000. That comes off. That's the last payment will be this year. And then we have a Tyler Mill purchase from 2015. That comes off and a couple others fluctuate. So in essence, adding in the 597 for the pool, when it really kicks in, you're really only adding $220,000. So based on uh, last year, that's a lot of numbers. I get that. It's maybe not the most compelling. I could have, I was gonna do a visual and I didn't get to it. But it's just something to look at. The debt service is, is a, is a moving target. And if you look at the debt service in our budget books, uh, in about four years, four or five years, it really comes down to some of these projects pay off. So I just wanted to make that point in terms of the, uh, the how the, the dollar amount factors into our overall budget. We've, as Tom noted, I think as other people noted, we've already spent $600,000, one way or the other. That's already out the door. Um, we spent it on the design. Uh, I, I also want to comment on the, some of what Counselor Fishbine talked about. He made the comment that, you know, why wasn't there a study done of the existing pool? Well, there really was. I mean, there was a, we, 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 we got a comprehensive report on the existing pool on October 10th, 2017 at our town council meeting. At that pool, uh, at the time Director John Galak talked about the state of the pool. We had a slideshow. We asked questions. Uh, some of the things that were talked about at that meeting, the fact that Mr. Galak had requested for $200,000, uh, he wanted to sandblast the pool, the cer- the, the, uh, surface of it. And that request, uh, he'd been making that request since 2015, and the mayor had denied that. I, I think rightfully so, because why would we, why would we spend that money on an aging pool? Um, he talked about the fact that the pumps at that time were in decent shape. They had somebody inspect the pumps. Uh, and that they were 17 years old at that point in time, and they were in decent shape. Uh, at that meeting, Counselor Laughlin actually asked a great question. He said, well, what, what is the lifespan of the pumps? And no one could answer the question at that meeting. I don't recall if we ever got an answer. So that would be an interesting answer. But the general sense from that meeting, there's issues with the concrete in the pool. Uh, the bath houses are not up to code. And there, if anyone's been in the, been in there, you, you, you know, you would know they're not the best place to, to be. But we, again, we spent a lot of time talking about that pool. It's a, it's a million gallons of water. And it's the size of the pool is, it's a time bomb, basically, with, with that massive filtration system with all of the pipes. As Tom, as Tom alluded to, every spring they go in and everyone's holding their breath every spring. Can we open the pool or not? And they have to make it a pipe crack over the, over the, over the winter. Um, did something break? And are we gonna really spend the money to fix that? And the size of the pool also dictates the size of the bath house. Because of the bath house is based on the health code, on the number of, of baters in the pool, and the parking is based on that too. So the, the pool at that size is simply unsustainable. And I bring all this up for two reasons. Number one, because Counselor Fishbine says we didn't have a comprehensive report. We did get a comprehensive report, October 10th, 2017. You can go into YouTube. You can go to a minute 37, an hour 37 minutes in, where Counselor Fishbine thanked them for their quote unquote comprehensive report. So we are not rushing into anything with this pool. We've gotten a report on the, on the, on the old pool. It is not sustainable. The pool committees at that meeting, again, they, they talked about the previous pool committees, and there had been, I think somebody else mentioned this, there have been three pool committees over 30 years. And there were just, I think one of them from the early 90s had a design, had designs that were similar to what we're looking at now. Uh, I think, but I think the, the pool might be a little bigger from those designs. But nobody recommended that we keep the current pool in its current state. Nobody. So I guess the, I bring that up because delaying, I don't know what delaying gets us. I don't know how much longer we can patch the pool. The pool isn't going, the time is right too. The pool is not going away. Next year, if social distancing is, allows it, I'm sure we can look at opening the pool again and what, like we've done the last several years, and maybe it'll open again. This, this is about the, about going forward, but that's always been the concern, that taking what we have, it's simply unsustainable. The, um, and I apologize, I was taking notes. Um, I do want to thank everyone for all the emails, and I think every counselor has mentioned that, uh, and, and uh, as somebody said, yes, they are on both sides. I counted 44 emails. Uh, 42 were for the pool, two were against. So yes, both sides represented. I don't go on Facebook much, so I appreciate that, that information as far as the, the Facebook, uh, the Facebook poll. Um, but I do think that this is, this pool is part of the fabric of what Wallingford offers. It's, it's part of, I think I called it last time, part of the, you know, the, the suite of services, or maybe it's more of an amenity than a service that we offer. And I know that, that, you know, there, there are arguments about, well, you know, nobody uses it. And that's true. We've had some decline in the usage because the, the condition of the pool has declined itself. We had about 5,000 pool tag sales before the near drowning in 2012. And then we really enforced the out of town rule. Photo IDs came into effect and it dropped. It ticked back up last year. We, the expanded season got us 2,700 tag sales. Um, you know, so it's one of those things that we use in town. The senior center has about 3,000 people using it. So it's, it's about 4,000 members registered and 3,000 use it. And I'm not sure if those are 3,000 unique visits or people, but they add up. You look at the reports that we get as counselors, we get the committee on aging reports. That data is in there. They do a great job of, of all the programs they do, and I love the senior center. I'm, I'm 11 years away from using it. Which, which is crazy, but, um, that serves about the same fraction of the town as the pool serves. So if you're going to argue, and no one's argued, I'm not saying anyone's argued this today. I think it may have come up at the last meeting. That, you know, 4% of the town uses the pool. Well, about 5 or 6% of the town uses the senior center. Um, and that's not even going through all the other stuff in town, the, the different sports leagues, the sports fields, what percent of the town uses those? So I only bring that up to say, we spend $800,000 a year on the senior center in our budget. $800,000 a year. And I am not saying we should spend less. Those are great programs. But I'm just pointing out, again, if that's going to be an argument about the pool, well, then if you're gonna argue that, you should look at the senior center as well. We have the library. We have all sorts of great things in town that, again, a fraction of the town uses, but they are great. They're great amenities and services, and I think that they're perfectly valid. The I, I, and I, again, I feel like I'm, uh, I don't mean to keep replying to you, Tom. It's just I thought you raised some great points. That's why, and I was like rewriting my notes as you were talking. Um, I'm just gonna close this out by saying, uh, like Tom, I don't have a pool. I've never had a pool. In fact, uh, I was outside on Friday or Saturday and one of my, my 10-year-old was riding his bike, like, right in front of our house. We have a corner lot. And he looked at me, and this is a true story, and he said, Dad, how come you don't take better care of our lawn? And, uh, yeah, our lawn is pretty bad. And, and so, no, my, my backyard is not one of those. You're not gonna see my backyard on HGTV. Uh, my, my, I don't have a house, uh, pool at the house. But I don't really think that matters one way or the other. I don't think that if you did have a pool, who cares if you're a counselor? That's not the point. I'm just, in fact, I'm, I'm probably biased toward the pool because we use the pool. Um, we've been, I, I grew up in the 70s in town, in the early 80s, using community pool like Tom. I learned to swim there. Um, I think I avoided the green stuff, thankfully. Um, and I've been, we've, we've gotten passes every year since 2012, uh, with, with our kids. So we've been there every summer. We were there last summer. And I think I would just say to anyone else out there, whether you're a counselor, whether you're a voter or a resident, and you're of an opinion, when was the last time you were at the pool? Everyone's got an opinion on the pool. Well, go to the pool. And I would especially say, if you're a town counselor, call up Rob Baltramitis, call up John Galak, although you can call John Galak, but he might not answer. Call up Kenny Michael and have them give you a tour of the pool, if you're a counselor. I'm sure that that was social distancing. You'd get a 10-minute tour of the pool. You know, we're all making pronouncements on this pool, and I'm, I've actually been there. I've used it consistently. So I know what I'm talking about when I, when I talk about the condition of the pool. And, you know, I understand the optics, and I think optics are a tricky argument to make in Wallingford. We can talk about optics all we want. There's optics on a lot of issues in Wallingford. There's optics to Wallingford being the last town hall to close because of COVID. There's optics to the lack of technology that means Wallingford's town employees have to go into the office versus other towns. So if you're gonna throw, if anyone's gonna use the optics argument, please use it, but let's apply it across the board as a council. Let's demand technology. Let's demand modernization, because that's all about optics too. Optics doesn't stop with community pool. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the time.
All right, uh, there are counselors who want a second bite at the apple, and before I let that happen, uh, I think I'm going to take a turn. I've, uh, received and read all the emails that started coming in over the weekend, and I've responded to a significant majority of the ones that were addressed to me directly until sometime mid this afternoon. Um, I will start by saying that I am not against the proposed renovation. I think that the existing pool has probably lived a good, long life, and there has been a fairly good return on the investment that was made in, in turning a pond into an asphalt pool and continuing its existence to what it became uh, in the last couple of decades. And, and Wallingford is a community that has had a pool. I, I understand going back to sometime in the 50s. Um, I understand, and I'm not even gonna get into the details of what parts of the pool I like and what parts of the proposed project I don't like, and um, that, that's not what the issue is for me. With the economy the way it is, we are certainly in a time of uncertainty. While I think we're all hoping for the best and we come out of this as, as good as we can. We don't know what the immediate future holds. Um, we are in the middle of revaluation. We are anticipating uh, the results of that and its impact on the next grand list, and if there is a significant decline in the grand list as a result of what's happened, and Counselor Tata already alluded to this, the mill rate is going to have to go up to compensate for that, and it, not, not just the the fact that our individual homeowner taxes are gonna have to go up to compensate for that, but the, the individual cost associated with paying the bond on this pool uh, is going to go up. Counselor Chertel makes a good point about the fact that some of the debt service is going to be, uh, coming off of, of the role of debt, and we are going to have some other projects in the near future that uh, will require us to look at debt. I mean, one of the things that was looming in the last year was the results of the, uh, survey of the schools and what their needs would be. There are all kinds of, of associated needs that may approach us in the near future that are going to uh, force us to bond again to deal with things in town like schools and like police departments and um, the, the police department, there was a proposal for a brand new building uh, in, in the fall, right after Counselor Fishbine and I were elected uh, and before we, we took our seats on the council. So there's always going to be, uh, projects for which we're going to have to bond. And, uh, I'm not suggesting that we should never bond for a pool. I think, I think at some point this pool is going to have to be tackled. And, uh, and the proposed project should be put into place. It's my hope that if we wait for the impact uh, of the economy and, and perhaps go out to bid again, that we'll realize the savings that has resulted from the price of oil going down to $0 a barrel. Um, I don't, those numbers are not baked in as, as Counselor Laughlin alluded. They're not baked into the current bids. So while I'd like to see this project go forward someday in very, very near future, I am not comfortable right now, in light of the surrounding circumstances, supporting the town going into debt uh, for another $7 million for the pool. So with that, let me look at the second bite requests. Counselor Morganstein, I have you next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I think that, um, Counselor Chertel covered a fair amount of the things that I wanted to reply to, having heard of those comments. Um, one thing that I did, however, neglect to mention, so between the second pool committee and the third pool committee, the third being this current project, um, the, the costs risen 40%. So, um, although we may wish and have our magic thinking that if we go out to bid once again, we may do better. Uh, we are at historically low interest rates and oil costs, but our supply is going to be available and may supplies actually go up considerably in cost. Um, so I think we have to think more towards the, um, fact that the longer you wait, the more costs go up. And we have certainly seen that happen. Um, the $625,000 design costs that we've already put in, um, pre-projects, again, having mentioned that hundreds of thousands of dollars over um, this last period of time has already been spent. And each time that there is this sort of thing happening, more costs get spent. Again, I will mention the 1980s, two or three course studies, um, being, and you know, there's no public golf course in Wallingford. So $100,000 or so each time was spent. Um, so there's a history where things get studied, money gets spent, projects get abandoned. Yes, there feels this imminent need to make this not fall apart now because there is a history in Wallingford. That's exactly what happens. Um, again, Counselor Chertel pointed out that the, um, difference in cost was pounding. It was not per month. It was a medium homeowner cost. Um, so that has already been clarified. Um, I just want to come back around to we need a seven to two. I don't know that we have it, but I would ask this body, what are we as a body, if not a town council that has voted to have something move forward? And if we roll over on this, where does that leave us moving forward? We do have a strong mayoral system. We did not change in charter revision this seven to two being necessary. But I would like to request that this body stand by their commitment to this project and overturn the mayor's veto, please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, next is Counselor Marone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So real quick, I just wanted to respond to a couple of things that were said before. You know, it's funny to me because only in government can you plan something for three years and then complain that you were rushed into a decision at the 11th hour. You know, and I've heard the term gambling used a few times. Gambling is not accurate to describe this situation in any sense of the word. So bonding this project is like taking out a mortgage on a home, which most of us have a mortgage on a home. You, you have a very predictable return payment schedule. Is the economy going to go down as a result of COVID? Absolutely. And, and we could enter a recession. But over the course of the next 22 years, when we're paying for this, is the economy going to rebound? Yes. So are people out of work? Yes. Is this a bad time to build? I'm not so sure it is. If you had to build a house now or buy a car now, it would be, it would be a great time. There's no saying that the economy doesn't rebound quickly and all the costs go higher than they are now. I mean, I think we have fixed costs right now that are within what we can afford. So I don't see why you don't strike when the iron is hot. I think when the economy is down is the best time to invest in the future because you're getting the best return on your investment. We asked for this job to make tough decisions. And then what happens is when we actually have a tough decision, we rely on the mayor to point us in the direction he needs us to go in. And he does a fantastic job running the town, no question about it. But on this issue, I simply think he's being over cautious. And I think that sometimes as, as a body, are we an important body? Because it seems like our default position on everything is delay, delay, delay. The American Legion Building, Wedding Caplin, the Simpson Parking Lot, this pool. Every time we reach a difficult issue, what we ask for is more time. So there's a time when you need to not ask for more time. You have to put on the daddy pants and you just have to make a decision. So I think where we are now is, are we a body that has the ability to make a decision like this on our own? Or do we have to rely on the, on the administration? I don't love every aspect of the design of the pool, but we had a committee that picked the pool. They took a long time to do it. They went with the, the features they wanted to. I could have been more involved with what the committee did. But it was a committee of people I trusted and so I trust their decision. So you know what? I also hear a lot of talk about the mill rate has to go up. The mill rate never, ever has to go up. We can always cut spending. You know, why do we always focus on the, on the side of the taxes are going to go up? The economy is going to go down, you know, so on and so forth. There's a lot of ways we can cut spending and we talked about a lot of things that we spend money on in town that we wouldn't necessarily have to spend money on. We make a lot of choices. And to me, the pool is a worthwhile choice amongst a lot of other great programs like the library and the senior center and so on. All things of which we could not do if we chose not to. So I don't feel stressed about this decision at all. I think that this is the best time that we're going to have to work, to fix the pool. We've been kicking this can down the road for probably more than 30 years. So I think we just need to get it done. And I think we need to override the mayor's veto. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And I beg your patience because the second request came in with the first request, so I'm reading through them. And so next I have Counselors Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah. I, I would like to follow up on a few things. Because, because I want to, I want to stress a couple of important points and everybody's brought together some very good points. Every single one of us, and I'm sure that we're going to get some from the public as well. We talked a little bit about what it is that we're supposed to be doing up here. And we're supposed to be good stewards of, of other people's money because I've, I've heard that mentioned more than once. And so when I think about 42 emails for the pool and the two that I got against. And when I think about 332 people in that survey saying, yes, override the veto. I want to spend the money on the pool. And the 206 against, just like anything else, and we could put this to referendum, we probably still get the same three to two ratio, which was basically what we had last week. It was a six to four, a six to three for the, for the bonding ordinance. The fact of the matter is, even those folks that were writing the emails and even the folks that were responding to the survey, they don't even have all this math, all these details, all this, all these numbers and all this information, but they knew what they wanted. This is their money. Now, yeah, those 500 people are speaking for the entire 44,000. I'm not going to get into a bunch of numbers and who shows up to vote and everything else because I could take all day with that. But I, I want to, I want to step on a few points. We, we talked about the number that I got from Jimbo's. It's $25.39 for the median assessed home starting in 2021. It goes down from there, not up, down. Also, to Counselor Chertel's point, things fall off the bonding. Now, I agree, other things are going to come on. They're always going to come on. When I, when I looked at some of those emails that came in, why did these people come to Wallingford? They mentioned Wallingford Electric, moderate taxes, the cost of housing, schools and community pool. If you take that away, you take them, taken away an element to what brings people to this town. Another good point was brought up. We, we put $800,000 into the senior center, which whatever percentage of the people use it, 6%, whatever, whatever it is. And community pool is 160,000 and it's 4%. Nobody uses everything in town. Nobody uses every single service in town. But we're not going to start closing parks and not mowing lawns and, and shutting down baseball fields because they're, they're not in use and we don't want to take care of them. We, we talk about, we could put this off for next year and, and the year after that and down the road. Why? I had to respond to some of these, these conversations in Facebook about, you know, costs and spending and down the road. At one point in our history, Community Lake was a full lake with a 12 foot dam that burst. Early on in the, in the review of maybe bringing that lake back, it was a $5 million project, $5 million over delays and having to do studies and testing. And this is early on. I'm not talking about dredging the ponds together. I'm talking about within years of the dam bursting. It was $5 million. Then requirements changed. Deep came in and said, no more standing bodies of water and so forth. We could possibly build a six foot dam. The ending price tag on that, before we fully abandon the idea of ever restoring that lake was $90 million at its maximum. The range was 50 million to 90 million, based on changing requirements, regulation and the passage of time. We'll bring this pool back someday and it won't be a $7 million project. It'll be eight, it'll be nine and it won't include some of this stuff. There, there are people making, counselors are making comments about, I think Public Works can do this and maybe the volleyball pit shouldn't be that. The bonding ordinance doesn't have to be entirely spent. We can go with the project and cut things out of it and then don't spend the money. This is what we're talking about. We're talking about restoring the bonding ordinance to do some subset of the work of the plans that have been three years in the making. The term gamble got used a couple of times. I, I liken the idea that, you know, it's not just a gamble. It's an investment. You know, right out of the Great Depression came, came the New Deal and that was a gamble too. That was a lot of money thrown at a lot of projects to put people back to work. And we didn't know if the economy was going to rise or fall. People do things every single day without knowing what tomorrow is going to be like. I was 24 years old and I was thinking about buying a house, but I was worried about layoffs at Northeast Utilities. I talked to my manager about, about the layoffs. If he could tell me anything because I was nervous. And he said to me, what are you doing right now? I go, well, I'm paying rent. What's your rent? 800 bucks. What would the mortgage be? 950. Because you don't think you could make that $150 up if you needed to? If you got laid off tomorrow, you'd still have to pay your rent. So I didn't let the fear take hold of me and not do anything. And people aren't doing it now. There are certainly people suffering through everything that's going on. But the, the bulk and the majority of the people are trying to move along and, and, and people are helping. I don't want to focus on the gloom and doom. I want to address the people that need help as a separate thing. That is beyond what the community pool and this project is all about and the bonding ordinance that's going to allow us to do this work. I, I think we really need to revisit what the, what the whole purpose of this was. It was to make sure that we could borrow to do this project. Now, we could delay certain parts of the project. We can change certain things. We don't have to use all the money. But if we don't and we delay, it's going to cost more. And then the excuse is going to be, well, it's way more expensive now. Now we don't want to do this and now we don't want to do that. I really want to make sure that people understand that in this town, the likelihood of something coming back once it's gone is real rare. The inertia takes over and the will to get things done isn't there. And we, we've even said at council meetings, if this was a discussion about digging a hole somewhere, putting in the pool and the cost that that would take, we would never do it. But coming back to this three years from now, four years from now, after people have made other decisions and gone about other ways to live out their summers, it, it's going to be gone. Make no mistake, it'll be gone. Or we will throw so much bad money on top of this that the end result is this will be a 12 or 13 million dollar expenditure going down the road. I really want us to look wholeheartedly at what we're doing and ask the question, is there going to be a better time and is this ever going to cost less? And if you're true to yourself, you have to answer, no way. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Savinelli. You'd still like to speak? We'll have you.
Yes, I would. First of all, I want to thank everybody for their, their comments and their input. The reason I want to speak is I'd like to clear up a few things. A couple from Mr. Laughlin, a couple from Mr. Fishbein. But let me start by saying that in 1999, 98, 99, we spent $1.9 million renovating this pool. And when we started the study on this pool, it started probably in 2016. So this project is over three years old, but had been brought to the attention of the council in September of 2017. But from 2017, 2013 to 2017, our current community pool lost about $100,000 a year. And what I mean by that, it cost us the money to run that pool at a loss of $100,000 per year because of the lack of sale of pool tags. And we did surveys and a lot of people just didn't like the condition of the pool and where the pool was. So I just wanted to clarify that and that's all I'm going to do during my discussion because I think, you know, you as the council have to make your decision. One of the comments was regarding the current economy and the cost of oil. The bids came in on April 2nd. On April 2nd, we were in this situation already. Now, maybe not as deep as we were in April 15th, but this was certainly a factor going in. And somebody also mentioned maybe going back out to rebid this. Just to let you know, we had only three qualified bidders who were able to go ahead and bid on this project and who have done pools for resident, for commercial use and for town use. So it's a very small, minute of people who can do this type of a project. I'm glad that Mr. Laughlin brought out the 2017 presentation because I was looking for that on my book before he brought it up and I did find it. And I think it's important, Mr. Fishbein, to take a look at that and as well as Mr. Stata to do that as well because it certainly shows the model work that we did. In that process, we had the health department, the Connecticut State Health Department coming in saying, if we were going to do any of these things that would change the pool slightly, we would have to do a number of things to become compliant. Because the pool currently is not compliant, but it is grandfathered because it's there. But if we touch anything and we start a major renovation, so there's things that need to be done that we can't do because it would change what the pool is and what it stands for. Regarding the, it was Mr. Chertel who mentioned that, I believe. But regarding the, the, the money, I mean, I, I work in the financial industry and these rates are incredible. And, you know, I go back to, and I think I said this to the mayor one time, we've been working on this for a long time. And this pandemic is something that just came up and threw a monkey wrench in it. And I understand the concerns of the people who are out of work and the businesses who are struggling. But this isn't something we came up with two months ago. And I know it was discussed heavily many times regarding the bonding. And the bonding rates today are incredible. And you were not going to see these rates, maybe never again. Delaying the program, and if we went a year, we could be looking at a five to a 10% increase in the cost of building this project, which would be in addition to 350 to 700,000 dollars. So I think we need to put that in the back of our minds and why you guys are making your decision tonight. And I'm just feeding you these facts. And again, back to Mr. Laughlin, you know, sitting on the fence. I wanted him to get an idea of some of the things that we have looked at. So I agree with some of the projects that fell off the, the grid. A number of years ago, we put in for an additional gym at Park and Rec. It was going to be postponed and I think it's about 12 years now and it's still postponed. So I, I do have a concern about this not going through and not happening. And I could tell you, I have hundreds of hours in this project along with our committee. And we think we did a good job in coming up with what we needed to do. We did field trips. We worked with experts. We talked with other companies out of the state. We talked with the municipal pool association to get our facts. So the word due diligence couldn't have been done any better than it's been done by this committee. And I hope you folks find a way to get this program to get through. It would be really beneficial time to do it. And to go back to the drawing board again would be, would be, you know, an untiring task. Thank you, Chairman Salome.
Thank you, Mr. Savinelli, and thank you for your dedication to the project. And I don't see any new requests from the council, so I'm going to go to the public and I already have requests from the public. Mr. Chardulo, are you there? Maybe we'll come back to you. Mr. Doring?
Sergeant Dearing of Sharon Drive. I want to say that I really appreciate what Town Counselors Andrew did on Facebook to get the input of so many residents. It is wonderful to get so many people's thoughts. I saw the results of the poll on Facebook and it seems that the vast majority of our population wants a pool of some kind. Vast majority of whom want to see the veto overridden. I agree with several of the counselors who have indicated there is no strong reason to delay, especially seeing this is the best time to borrow. Therefore, I believe the council should do everything within its power to work on the pool's renovations as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Comerford. You're next.
Yes, hopefully you can hear me. It appears that Mr. Savinelli was the lead person with this pool project. Is that correct?
Yes, he was the head of the committee.
Okay, Mr. Savinelli, as far as the splash pad goes, what is, if you happen to know this, what is the liability aspect as far as the splash pad is?
Well, we ran this by the, the town compliance, I believe. I'm trying to remember his name, but we have somebody who looks at all of these things. And he's also reviewed this with a few other towns. It's not any different than any other playground. Whatever the liability is, the liability is, we will have proper signage. Children should not be left there alone without parents. We've covered this. We've talked to the mayor about this because he had some of the same concerns. But we, we have that under advisement and we are planning to, to move forward with that with the proper signage, age appropriate areas and so on. So the liability is as much as any other playground. As a matter of fact, it probably takes some of it away from the pool because we'll have less kids in the pool, which would, you know, be a splash pad is actually safer for them.
Okay, so the individual that you were referring to, would that happen to be Mr. Tribber from Risk Management?
That's the guy. Thank you. I couldn't remember his name. He's already, Mr. Chairman's already looked at this, yes.
Yeah, I spoke to him today, actually. And he spent, he told me that he, in my opinion, that he spent no more than 20 minutes on the whole project. So when I talked to him briefly, he really wasn't, in my opinion, very familiar with the liability aspects as far as adhesive abrasions, exposure for potential liabilities. Now, I would have assumed that your panel that has been commissioned for well over two or three years, however long it's been, would have had some type of appropriate liability exposure from other pools and splash exposure from other pools and splash pads associated with your design bill. Do you happen to have those or did you happen to happen to present those to the town council just in case you might have any questions on that?
I don't recollect, you know, bringing that to the town council, but I will tell you that what we have, we found here is that we are, with the pool being smaller, the liability of the pool the way it is, is, sorry about that, is going to be a lot less than it would be at the larger pool.
So the answer is no.
Let me finish. Also, we're going to have a brushed concrete floor and there is no major liability here. And I'm surprised to hear that he has said that he only spent 20 minutes on it because I know between John Golic, especially, spent a lot of time with him on this because we knew it was a concern of the mayor's.
Well, I would be hopeful that a committee that's been together for the past two and a half years would be able to present some type of documentation as far as liability exposure for the taxpayers because that to me seemed with ambulance chasers and other people that are looking for free money or exposure, that you would have something to back that or substantiate that. Clearly you don't. So at any rate, going forward and moving with that same train of thought, has there anybody or other towns, municipalities, that their splash pads specifically have been shut down for any reason and did you forward that to the council?
We, we visited four or five splash pads from Trumboldt to Britain to East Haven. We spoke with all the Park and Rec people and there's been no issues to close down a splash pad during the course of the year, other than I believe in case there was a thunder and lightning storm coming, you certainly don't want people in a splash pad. But you're not going to get the same situation that you would in a pool if you had an accident because we're going to have separate filtration systems. So if something happens in the pool, it doesn't affect the splash pad or vice versa.
Unfortunately, that wasn't the question. The question is, throughout this country, other municipalities took the same undertaking, correct? And because they took that undertaking, there's certain liabilities and exposures that are inevitable with that. So with, with that, the question then becomes, what other municipality, like Cape Cod, born Cape Cod had a problem where they had to shut down the splash pad. So did you bring any, or did your committee research or evaluate any other municipalities that had to shut down their splash pads for whatever reason?
Mr. Comerford, there's a lot of people on the queue that want to speak. And these questions probably would have been more appropriate at the April 28th meeting when we were talking about whether or not to go forward with the bond. Right now, the issue is whether or not to override the mayor's veto. So if you could focus your questions a little bit, I think that would be helpful.
The question, excuse me, Chairman Savon, I don't, number one, appreciate getting cut off every time that I speak because unfortunately, sometimes I don't have the availability to attend the meetings that maybe you can. So I'm trying to get these questions identified. Maybe you should be the one that answers the questions, which I don't think that you can. This particular individual is the person that runs the ship.
Now you're being personal and rude. So if you have a question for Mr. Savinelli that has to do with the pool, I suggest you focus on it.
Okay, Mr. Savinelli, can you explain to us about pH levels and how the pH level affects splash pads?
It, because the water is recycled, you have a whole different, it's much different than a pool. I am not an expert, I can't tell you in detail, but it's not going to be the same as it would be with standing water in a pool.
Okay, so you're not familiar with any, any other splash pads across the country through municipalities were shut down because of pH levels?
We checked with a number of them and we never heard one person mention that they had an issue, no.
Okay, so let me get to the chase. The chase is, I happen to agree with, with Counselor Tata 100%. Times are tough. I'm not saying that this committee, this commission didn't do the due diligence, but I also think that, you know what, as a taxpayer, if I'm spending 7.4 million dollars, Mr. Savinelli, maybe you could answer this question, has there any, any other location looked at other than this one for this particular project? Just say yes or no is good.
No.
Okay, so if I'm spending 7.4 million dollars, maybe there's other locations that would be much better suited for this, which clearly it wasn't even an opportunity to even advance that. So with social distancing, with parking restrictions, all these different moving targets, none of these have ever even been looked at, entertained. We don't know about liability, exposure, pH levels and so forth, but to spend 7.4 million dollars, I just think this is absurd, especially in the state that we're in. I commend Counselor Tata for speaking up and she articulated my opinion 100%, thank you.
Next is Mr. Rice. Mr. Rice, your equipment doesn't seem to be working. We, I can see that you are speaking, but I can't hear your voice. Still nothing coming through. Still nothing. Sorry about that.
Can he type his question into the chat bar? We can read it, is that easier?
Yeah, Mr. Rice, why don't you give that a shot? In the meantime, we'll move on to Mr. Martin.
Hi, Ben Martin, Ward Street. I heard a lot of talk tonight about how this is not the time because we have an economic situation due to the COVID-19 pandemic that would mean that like this isn't the right time to do it. I would argue that because of the COVID-19 pandemic and the economic situation, this is the exact time to do this. It wasn't a gamble, the New Deal wasn't a gamble, it was known economic theory that when you have a recession or depression, the government should spend money to alleviate citizen suffering and provide jobs and provide people with a living. And I think that's exactly what this pool project can be a part of, something that we can be doing. The, what people, I don't believe that people are going to benefit from pinching pennies in the time when they need assurances and consistency from town government, from state government and from federal government. They need to see that business is going on as usual and that when there's an opportunity to do a project for less costs because of the economic situation and also to provide jobs to people in town that will spend money in town and provide economic stimulus, that is exactly what needs to be done. And this project can be part of an economic stimulus that can keep the people of Wallingford employed, keep money coming into the town at a time when it may not be, and also take the opportunity to take advantage of lower cost supplies and labor costs. So this is actually the perfect project for this time because we need, people need to see that we have, the government has consistency and that we can move forward and continue to support the people of the town in a time when they are nervous and worried about what the future brings. And saying to this, saying to the people of the town that we have a future, we know what the future is going to be and here's, here's what it is, while we benefit from lower cost is exactly what needs to be done. So it's not risky, it's, it was, we don't want to go to an austerity mode while people are in the case where they're losing jobs. I mean, the $25 in tax money that would be coming out of people's taxes is nothing compared to having a project that they can do and something that they can work on and something to look forward to. I'm sure the people that would work on this would much rather have the job and the opportunity to work than they would have that $25 savings in their taxes. So I hope everyone will vote to move this project forward for the benefit for the, of the people of Wallingford and for the greater benefit of the town. Thank you.
All right. Hang on a second, let me clear up the audio. Next up, I have Mr. Morganstein. Mr. Larry Morganstein, are you there? Maybe the wifi in the house is down.
Can you hear me now?
Is that Larry?
Yes, it is.
You're on.
Okay, good evening, Chairman Savon, thank you. I think we've gone through this endlessly, we've had years of doing this. And what I'd like to address tonight.
Can you shut off your other device, please?
Yeah, we've taken it out of the room, is that better?
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Sorry.
I want to take a moment just to acknowledge all the people for the last three years. We've had John Golic, Mr. Savinelli, Kenny Michaels, all the people on the committee. Over that time, we also saw people in the community who contributed in surveys to contribute to the pool design and things they liked and what they'd like to see. This has truly been a community project as well as a community asset. And I think that's what we need to look at here is that we're talking about the fabric of this community and what draws us together. We've talked about other aspects of this town, the senior center, which certainly is an asset, but we're talking about a pool that brings people together of all different ages, all different income levels and all different situations. And I think it's important that we have something like that to look forward to. I also want to acknowledge that when you look at the council itself and who's been in support, you get a diversity of opinion and, and political knowledge and leanings. I mean, when you could put together Joe Marone and my wife, I think that says something about a broad-based appeal. You're not talking, when you talk Joe Marone, you're not talking a liberal tax spending, tax spending money liberal here. We're talking about somebody who thinks very hard about any money that's being spent very thoughtfully and very thoroughly. I do not think him or Mr. Shortell take this lightly, nor do I think my fellow Democrats take this very lightly. I think it's legitimate to say we are in a crisis, that people are suffering during this, this period of time. Myself, I'm out of work myself and I don't know if my business will recover. But I think the thing that ties us together is that we have a belief and hope that our community will get back to this. And you gotta act on a theory that we could be better. Mr. Fishbein says often, we could be better. Well, I think this is an opportunity to be better. This is an opportunity to look to the future and plan for the future and say what strengthens our community, what do we stand for, how do we bring ourselves together and what do we hope for in a better future? And I think this represents all those things that we would like to accomplish. I, I'd like to encourage Mr. Laughlin especially, that I think legitimately, I think you've given a lot of thought to this, I consider that you're sincere in being on the fence. And I understand that, there's certainly legitimate aspects to be considered on both sides. But your vote, if you go to number six, there is a chance that this could go through. If you don't go with that vote, there is no chance. But I think it's important for you to consider when you're making that, is that you do have an influence here and that your vote and voice will influence that final outcome. And again, what do we want that outcome to be? Do we vote for hope? Do we vote for a better future? Or do we say that after all these years, all the money spent, we may not see this? We're going to lose a year, we were going to lose a year anyways. We're going to probably lose the bid, it's going to start all over again and yeah, we might get a better bid, we might not. There's no guarantee in that either, it might be more. And then we've got a second year of either renovation or total new construction, so two years. There's always going to be bonding projects and capital projects, that's never going to go away. It's a question of what we think is of value for this community. It's a question of what we see that makes this community stronger. And I'm hoping that when you see Joe Marone and a Gina Morganstein, a Vinnie Testa, a Chris Shortell and a Jason Zandry together and hopefully a Tom Laughlin again to join them, I think you're seeing a diversity of opinion that has given a lot of thought of this and really see that the value is there for this community. So I'm urging you, I'm urging you all to make this vote tonight something for the future, to not give in to despair, but to give in to your best beliefs, to rise up instead of fall back. People have been wanting this for a long time and they fought for it, they spoke for it, they contributed to it, and we've had a lot of time to go over and over and over this infinitely. And you should pretty much know where you are on this. Thank you.
Thank you, all right. Mr. Chardulo's been trying to get my attention the entire meeting and so I need to figure out which phone is his. Are you caller one? You're not caller one, are you caller seven? No. Please keep trying, are you caller eight? Are you caller nine? Is this you, Mr. Chardulo?
Can you hear me? My mic is unmuted.
You are caller 11.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Mr. Chardulo, you are coming through.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Okay, let me just start talking then. As you can imagine, I'm having some, I'm having a little difficulty with the go-to application. Yeah, let me start by saying that.
You just muted yourself. We should be able to hear you now.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. What's happening is I'm getting feedback into my ear here.
Your phone actually sounds better, so can you mute your computer and you'll be ready to roll?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Finally. This may have something to do with my computer being 15 years old, but anyhow, I, I just wanted to call in tonight and say that I think the, I support the mayor's veto. I think that there are a number of reasons that it's a good idea to postpone this decision. I won't go through all of the specifics that the mayor made in his, in his letter, but that, those are very, very important. The fact that we're in a pandemic, we're in an economic The fact that we're in a pandemic, we're in an economic depression. Many pundits, by the way, are saying that, and it's sort of 50/50, that we we may in fact go into a deep recession, a depression, which which may require three to five years for us to begin to climb out of it. And even then, businesses are gonna have so much debt that they've taken on that the economy is gonna be extremely slow. 25 million lost jobs. Airlines, travel, and leisure, I don't know that that's gonna come back for many years. So that 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 in itself is enough. But I I think there's a couple of other issues I'd like to point out, my own feeling. First of all, I don't believe that we have ever comprehensively and fully vetted a proposal for what we're trying to do, my perception. I would love to see a a proposal, a real proposal, which does a cost comparative analysis between the existing pool, the cost of maintaining that existing pool, which understandably is old, but nevertheless is functional, versus going to a new pool. And I think that's that's critical, and we just, we just, I haven't seen us do that. And as part of that, I think we should reframe this issue a little bit. What we're really talking about doing is taking a a pool, which is 36,000 square feet, and converting it to a destination. And I understand that, and it's very, very attractive to think in terms of this this new destination, this new vision. It's not really kind of upgrading the pool. We're creating a destination, which, by the way, and this should be covered in the proposal, still has outstanding issues. I attended the meeting where the team came in and made their proposal, and there were a number of things that that came up that I don't think have been adequately vetted or discussed. One is the size of the pool. We're reducing the size from 36,000 to 8,000. That's a huge drop. And I I can recall asking the the consultant, how many people this pool could accommodate at one time? And if I'm not mistaken, his number was something like 320. That is not a very decent-sized swimming pool. And when you looked at the pool, the layout, it wasn't just 8,000 square feet for swimming. It was, they had six lanes, you know, blocked off for for lap swimming. There was a sliding board that went into the swimming pool, which, again, removed the section or an area of the pool for general swimming. So it was very small. The other thing was that parking, I think, was an issue. The question came, is there enough parking? I don't think that was adequately vested, vetted. And perhaps most importantly is what what's the cost of use of this pool? If I, if we put a $9 million price tag on the town and require every resident to pay $20 to $25 a year for 20 years to build the pool, how much is the average homeowner with maybe one, two, or three kids gonna have to pay to use this pool? One of the things we do here in Wallingford, which I I think it's evolved, we're not running a business in Wallingford. We're providing services. And this notion of creating this service and then trying to make make it a zero cost by pricing usage, I think is inappropriate. If we're gonna build a a pool or a new park, I really think it should be available to anybody in the community that wishes to use it at a very nominal fee that anybody could could afford. That makes it a true community resource. The other way, what we end up with is, you know, a couple thousand tags out of 46,000 people. So I think these things really, really need to be be vetted. And regarding how many people support it or don't support it, that's an open question. I know that Jason did the the survey. In fact, I responded to it. I was one of the voters. But but really, I mean, if we want to get a sense of whether there's broad support for this thing, let's use the referendum. There are many communities that regularly use referendums for big-ticket items, in particular ones that are controversial. So if and when we get to the point where we do, we are considering seriously to do this, let's let's put it to a referendum rather than responding to a small group of people who granted are passionate about it. But that's not the community. That doesn't represent the the community. Somebody mentioned, well, it's only $20, $25 a year. Well, I look at it this way. We've received tax increases, and I know you've heard me say this before, every year as far back as the your memory can go. I don't know what the average has been. Maybe the average has been $50, $60, $70 a year for the average homeowner. So you put $20, $25 on top of that, you're basically increasing taxes by 40% for 20 years. Fiscally, I think that's irresponsible. In terms of costs increasing in the future, that might have been true historically. But I'll tell you what, I I really think we're in a a new economic ballgame here with this pandemic. The Fed has been trying to drive up inflation for the last 10 years, and they haven't been able to do it. Now that we've pumped in six, seven trillion dollars of free money into the system, you're gonna see deflation. In fact, two months ago, the cost of living indicator fell by four tenths of a percent. This month, it fell by eight tenths, and this is just the beginning. So the argument that it's gonna cost more in the future, I think, is not necessarily valid in the environment that we're in. So there's a there's a big uncertainty there. And my last comment is, I happen to believe that we have certain inefficiencies in town. And I really believe that if the council set its mind to it, that we could resolve some of these inefficiencies, which are driving up costs and frankly, problems. The most common one, which I've mentioned a number of times, and it's very controversial, is our pension. If we remedied that, we'd save $5 million a year, each and every year. So if we could remedy these efficiencies, we could in fact do many of the things that we want but don't necessarily need, like a swimming pool or a new swimming pool, and we wouldn't have to keep raising taxes. So once again, I I say that I think that the veto was a good move, and I support it, and I hope you'll you'll sustain it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chardulo. I'm gonna mute your phone now. Mr. Hind, you've been patient.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, many people have made the points that I I wish to make. I would, I would say, I would like to to thank all of you for your responses. I was one of the many letter writers that you heard from prior to the meeting, and I appreciate that all of you read what I had to say and actually responded. I I really appreciate it. In listening to the discussion, I have to say, I I'm a little confused. I really think that we're all looking at this in the in the wrong way. You know, we're not talking about a one-time spending money in one shot. This is a 20-year bond. So you can't look at, you know, what the financial situation is today because, you know, you could bond the money today when there's a downturn in the economy and have a a complete upturn five years from now. You could bond the money when the economy is great and have a recession five years from now. So you can't, you really shouldn't be looking at this as, well, what's the economy like right now? We're talking a 20-year bond. This is gonna be money spent over 20 years. And so really, you know, I think what you need to be looking at is whether the a project is worthy of support. And I think even the mayor in his in his veto said that this is a project that is worthy of support. And many of you tonight have said, this is a project that is worthy of support. And so if it's a project that is worthy of support, then I think we fund it. You can't. It it's a project that's going to be paid for over a 20-year period. The economy can go up, the economy can go down over that period. None of us have a crystal ball. What I would say is that, you know, Warren Buffett, one of the the greatest investors of our time, has a famous quote in which he, you know, he says something to the effect of, when others are greedy, be fearful. And when others are fearful, fearful, be greedy. This is the time to be greedy. I can't think of another time when people were more fearful of what what was gonna happen in the economy. If you look at the interest rates right now, I I think Counselor Zandry said we'd be paying between 2% and 2.75% on these bonds. Ever gonna pay interest at a lower rate? And so what what's the option then? Are we then going to say, okay, well, we don't feel comfortable bonding this project now. We're gonna wait for the economy to pick up again. And so when the economy picks up again, we're gonna be paying higher interest rates. I don't think that that's a, that that is a real good choice. I don't think that that's, you know, telling people, okay, because according to everybody that I've heard tonight, the pool isn't going away, that, you know, you're gonna reconsider this project at a later time. So then five years from now, are we then gonna reconsider it? And when the interest rates are higher, are we gonna tell people, okay, now, we could have paid 2% to 2.75% five years ago, but now we're gonna pay 3%, 3.5% now? I mean, that doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me either. I mean, and and again, I I really think it's important to to focus on the fact that this is a 20-year bond. You're gonna have ups and downs in the economy during that 20-year period. This isn't a one-shot use of money. So, you know, I I really think you should be looking at this and saying, is this a project that is worthy of support? If it is, then you fund it. If you don't like the project, then vote against it, I guess. But I haven't heard anybody say that they're against the project tonight. Maybe Counselor Fishbein, you know, he may not be all that comfortable with the project. But everybody else here seems to say that they're in support of the project. So, you know, if that's the case, then you can't worry about what the economic condition is now, because five years from now, you can have a great economy. And you'll be very happy, and and your constituents will be very happy that they're paying a much lower interest rate on those bonds. So those are my comments. I appreciate your time. I appreciate your consideration, and I would respectfully ask that you override the veto tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rice did transmit his comment to me. He said, I just wanted to let you know that I, as a resident of Wallingford for 47 years and a homeowner, I never used the pool and still paid taxes for those that did, but I don't think that this is the right time for us to be spending $7 million. The pool should be a pool to cool off in and not a country club. Please sustain the mayor's veto and bring back something that will cost less at the appropriate time. Thank you. And I believe that wraps up all the comment we have, both. I guess I could just try the telephone callers. I'm Mr. Chardulo. I know which line you are. I'm not gonna unmute you, but anybody on the telephone wish to comment?
Counselor, this is Jared Liu.
Go ahead, Mr. Liu.
Thank you. Jared Liu, Curtis Avenue. And I want to thank Mr. Savinelli for his service. Want to thank Counselor Shertel and Morgenstein and Testa for their longtime support on this issue. And really thank Counselors Andrea and Marone for doing their homework and coming at this conversation with some concrete numbers and some leadership on this issue. I I think, you know, everyone knows that, you know, I've certainly disagreed with the mayor on many things. But, you know, respectfully, you know, I've always appreciated that, like, you know where the mayor stands. But also respectfully, tonight's not about the mayor. This is about the council. And, you know, there was a time about 100 years ago when the economy also was not doing very well, but some elected leaders had the idea that Wallingford could generate electricity, and they took that chance. They spent some money, and they set this town on a better path. And this is something that Wallingford is obviously quite known for. And, you know, these are calculated risks that we have to take. And I just want to be clear that this moment is not about COVID either. You know, if we were concerned about the economy coming back from COVID, which we all should be, and if we wanted to be cutting taxes like other towns are doing, we would be having meeting after meeting, getting serious about economic development and holding the town accountable for what those plans are. And I definitely encourage you to take up those conversations in future meetings. But tonight is about separating elected officials from elected leaders. Thank you.
All right. I think we have heard from everyone, and Madam Clerk, would you, since it's been a couple hours, would you please read back the motion and we'll call the vote?
Definitely. So the, you can hear me, right?
Yes.
Sorry about that. So the motion made by Counselor Marone was to overturn the mayor's veto on the pool project. And you're ready for the vote?
Yes, please call the roll.
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
No.
Marone?
Yes.
Morgenstein?
Yes.
Shertel?
Yes.
Tada?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
No.
The motion fails.
All right, that is all the business we have for this portion of our meeting. I am going to stop the recording. We're going to take a break, and we'll start the the special meeting on the budget in about five minutes. Thank you. Thank you.
This conference will now be recorded.
All right. I'd like to call to order this special meeting of the Town Council regarding the fiscal year 2021 budget. Please rise for a moment of silence. I have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Fishbein? Fishbein? Laughin?
Here.
Marone?
Here.
Morganstein?
Here.
Chortel? Tada?
Here.
Testa?
Here.
Sandri?
Here.
Chairman Savoni?
Here.
Mayor Dickinson?
Fishbein is back.
Fishbein's back. Is the mayor still on the call?
Yes, here.
Okay. Jim Boz?
President.
And Attorney Farrell?
Hang on.
Think he's going to do the law department, right?
He's there by phone. I'm here too.
Oh, Janice, you're here?
I am.
Hi.
Snuck in. Nobody was looking.
Try Attorney Farrell again.
Attorney Farrell?
Hello.
Are you here?
Yes. He is caller 20.
Awesome. Is Chris Chortel back? Somebody let me know when he comes. Tom, let me know.
Okay.
I'm all set.
Great. First up is the law department. Don't both fight. You speak first.
Well, we don't normally give a presentation, but our budget is pretty much in line with where it's been in terms of operating and maintenance. Our budget's basically been the same for numerous years. I think over the past five or six years, we've gone up all of $6,000. So we're told to keep it lean. We keep it very lean, and we're here to answer whatever questions you have.
All right. Questions for the law department? Counselor Tada, you're first.
Thank you. Hi, Attorney Savon, Attorney Farrell. I've been asking most of the departments or all the departments two questions, so I'll just ask them both at once and whoever wants to answer. Number one, and I don't assume this would be the case with your department, but have you seen any added costs or savings related to the pandemic, is my first question? And number two, I'm asking each department if there's anywhere that they can find potentially around 1% that they can maybe save for your budget. And I know you said yours is pretty lean and it looks like it's, you know, pretty consistent. The one line that stood out to me that maybe you might be able to find that would be line 56714, which is specialists, because it looks like this year, to date, you're only about 2,900 and then 20,000 is budgeted. So I was wondering if you could maybe save the 5,500 from that line, if that was a possibility? So those are my two questions. Thanks.
We don't really have any extra cost or savings as a result of the pandemic. You know, our office has remained very busy during this time. You know, we have, just in case you didn't know, for example, we have a new governor's executive order came out tonight about the restaurants. Yay! So we'll be deciphering that over the next day and give you a memo on that. So, you know, we did, we don't really have anything, we're really not the right department for that. As to that account, the professionals, the specialist account, we've actually spent about $5,200 and we have another $11,000 that's committed to current work. You know, this is an important account. We would have drained more of this money probably but for the pandemic because our foreclosure actions require appraisals, which kind of grounded to a halt. But so basically, our expectation is that maybe there's going to be a couple of thousand by the end of the year, although if we get activated again, we'll start using that money. That's kind of, that's really an important account for us as we do our work throughout the year. And just, I would let you know that when we use that money, you know, for foreclosure work, we do recover those funds back, but then go back into the general fund. So it's not, you know, we are able to bring that money back. And we really, I mean, I think it's very nervously, if that's a word, lean budget. So in all honesty, I don't believe that we really can trim that any farther than we have. We did put in a request for a capital item for a new copy machine. Our copy machine is 10 years old. It's our copier, scanner, fax machine, all rolled into one. And, you know, we did have a couple of incidents this year where it needed to be repaired, and it took like three or four people on a service call because it's so old, nobody knows where the manual is. But it is still operating, but we are looking to replace that because we don't expect that to last. But other than that, we really, I would really say that our budget is incredibly lean. So I wouldn't know where to do that.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Counselor Morganstein?
Thank you, Chairman Savoni. Hi, Janice. Yeah, so I was going to try to cut, hi, I was going to try to cut in line from Christina for the 1% question, but I didn't make it. She's quick. So a question, the fact that we know that money that you spend gets reimbursed and goes into the general fund, I don't know if we have Mr. Boz here still or if we did, is there any mechanism, since we know that money comes in and gets reimbursed, to have that money go back to your department rather than going into the general fund?
Before Jim Boz jumps in, I just want to point out that when we recover those funds, it's not necessarily in the same fiscal year. Foreclosure actions can cross over into the next fiscal year. So it's not, you know, it's not something like I can say we spend it in month, January, and get it back in April. It could be the following April. It could be, you know, it could be even longer than that. So just before he answers that question, I just want to make sure you understand that.
Is he there?
Yes, I am here. Thank you for the question. We also budget in the revenue. I'm just looking for my budget book now to find it. We budget, I beg your pardon for a second here. Legal recoveries, we budgeted $15,000 in the budget document that you're looking at. It's on page 11 of the revenues, if you have your budget handy. Last fiscal year, we covered about 20,000, it looks like. So we do budget for some revenue for those recoveries.
So we feel like that money already on the revenue side adequately reflected?
For the most part, yes. Now, there comes a time, and there has historically been a time here or there, when the law office will need an appropriation into their budget because they've had a lot of recoveries or they've had a lot of action, which has generated some revenue. And we will come to the council, usually Jerry Senior and Janice will write something up to the mayor. It'll go before you folks to appropriate some of that revenue back into the law budget, usually when it comes to things like experts. There's a line item in the law, law budget with regards to certain experts that they might need or certain legal experts. So there have been times when we have had some of that revenue appropriated into the law budget if they've needed it.
If I could just speak to that for a moment, that, you know, we are going to be asking for a small transfer before the end of the fiscal year due to work in our, by our workers' comp attorney. So we are going to be looking to recoup some of that money, around $6,000, probably at your next council meeting, to cover the expenses that we expect between now and the end of the fiscal year. So, as Mr. Boz says, we have done that on occasion. You know, we've also, you know, sometimes had to move money from one of our line items to another because it is such a lean budget, sometimes we have to do that, so.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Thank you both.
You're welcome.
We're still on the law department budget. Any other questions for the law department? And I see no messages indicating questions. Anybody on the telephone with questions for the law department? All right. Law department, thank you very much. You are.
Thank you.
Good night.
Up next is the mayor's budget, the mayor's department budget. Mayor, do you have an introduction for us?
Not really. It's not a large budget. I will state that 1% would be something around $3,000, and I don't think there's $3,000 to find in there.
Okay. Any questions on the mayor's budget? I see no takers on the mayor's budget. Up next is the town council budget. And I will say that it is flat funded from the prior year. We did have an allocation in the middle of the last year to bring on a recording secretary for the ordinance committee meetings.
Cut it, cut it, cut it.
I heard that.
Be quiet, Jim Boz.
Boy, it's late.
It would have been the mayor.
So Counselor Tada, you have a question that I might not be able to answer, and I hope Barbara can.
Sure. Let me just try to find the right page.
It's 13.
Thank you. Well, I know, I know we didn't, I mean, maybe I can answer my own question here since I'm part of this, but I know we didn't have any effect because of the pandemic.
As a matter of fact, we now have a $30 a month expenditure for go-to meeting, so there's an increase.
Okay. So we do have a slight increase. Thank you. Okay. 1% of our budget would be about $577, it looks like. Two spots kind of stand out to me, where I think we could maybe save that. The office expenses and supplies could potentially be somewhere. My other offer would be I'm willing to have that come off of my stipend if that is an option. So I'm more than willing to do that to have this department save the 1%. Thank you.
Do you want me to answer that?
We typically, yeah, we typically spend those office expense supply dollars. Can you comment on what that goes to since you write the expenditure requests?
Yeah. So that office expense will get paid. Currently, there's a bill sitting on my desk for the budget ad that we have to put in the record journal. I think it's $1,700 sitting on my desk right now, and that will be paid out of that line. And then we will, we purchase your water. That's another, that's a whole other issue.
I don't want to bring that up again tonight, but.
We don't, I don't want to talk about it tonight. I'm not.
No, I understand. So with that, all right, so there's, there's really nothing there then besides that other option that I mentioned. So that was all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions regarding the council budget? I see hands. Okay. Counselor Morganstein?
Yeah, hi. So I am going to go further out on a limb, and again, hopefully we are all going to put our proposals together to find a way to do a zero-budget increase. And while I believe all of us on the council, the council is a second job. It's not our primary mode of money-making. Is there any will to lowering our stipend slightly, or is that something that can even be considered? I don't think that the charter dictates how much our stipend is.
I think if we all give back $100 each, it achieves the goal.
So that mechanism would be being paid less as far as the check or giving a check to the budget?
We would, we would adjust line 51,000 by $600, by, actually, we don't have to do $100. I think $75 each would get us down to, down by $600, which would cover the 1%.
And then not to drag out an already late evening, but I know that when we did charter revision, we went in circles quite a lot, and I think the law department weighed in if Janice is still around with the fact that the requirement to put ads in the paper, for instance, for the budget, what did we say, 1,700 or 7,100? That I think the charter actually reads that you are obliged to notify the public in the media of the common man's usage. I don't know that, again, that that's really a discussion for tonight, but these big expenses, the local newspaper, in this day of not all media being a physical newspaper, I think as a question perhaps to the law department in general with our budget, those big expenses in the local paper, is it in fact that these ads have to go into the local newspaper? I don't know if you remember, Christina, that there was a lot of talk of ad costs when you're announcing meetings. It was thought that as time moves forward, the news print is not necessarily the media that gets the word out for these public meetings.
So I had thought that for this budget, I had a discussion with somebody about publishing, instead of publishing the quarter-page ad that we usually do, that we just publish a link to the PDF on the town website. Mr. Boz, do you remember? Is that what we did or did we do the way we usually do?
No, we did a, we did a three-quarter page ad.
Yeah, I don't know if that's considered under the advertisement or is that under the public hearing on the budget, Barbara? Do you have, I see you rifling through a charter there. Do you have?
Trying to look it up quick in the charter. It's, it's on, we did it as a public here. We did it as a notice of public hearing to be determined, and then your budget, and then also the link to the finance page. So it was kind of like a triple thingamajiggy, but it was a lot of money. I mean, we, every, every ordinance we pass notices, the passages have to go in the paper. They're three pages sometimes. We spent a lot of.
I agree wholeheartedly with you. I was not aware, so I'm glad Councilwoman Morganstein brought this up because I'm going to look at the charter tomorrow. I gotta look at the charter tomorrow. I was not aware that we addressed that in charter change. And if it did, then we'll, you know, we'll we'll look for it.
I, as mayor here, I don't think that was changed in the charter, and it really comes down to how you're gonna notify people. Certainly, a notice of the website is fine, but to cut out the notice to people who they they are not anywhere but looking at newspapers.
Yeah, councillor Tata offered to address her recollection of the charter.
Thank you, Mr. Tata, Mr. Chairman. It's past my bedtime. I'm sorry. Um. I, as I recall, and I just looked it up in the charter on page seven. This is for ordinances being published, but I I recall the same thing Senator Morganstein did last time. We left the, we changed it so that there's an option, so it's not required to be in a paper and the line I'm looking at in this one particular section, as long as we kept it consistent throughout, says. Shall be published once in its entirety in a newspaper having circulation within the town or by alternative means established by the council by ordinance. So I guess ordinance.
With ordinance.
I don't believe, I mean.
We did it.
Yeah, I don't believe that part of it happened. But anyway, hopefully that helped a little bit.
Yeah.
So if I could make one more comment. If we can promise ourselves to make an ordinance before the end of this budget year, perhaps we can. That cost a little bit. And in answer to the mayor's cut. I would say, given that the public library has computers, the senior center has computers. A link to. That would would, to my mind, be deemed sufficient. But it sounds like we need to work on that when we meet as an ordinance committee again.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay.
Councillor Fratell, you're on. Thank you, Chairman, Chairman Tata. Um, I, we actually had this exact same conversation a year ago with the ordinance committee. If memory serves. And I remember talking to the mayor about it offline and. I, so I, I know the mayor, as he just said, he's passionate that there are people who read the paper, and I agree with him. There are people who just read the paper. And we talked about COVID a lot. This is the, I mean, these types of ads are a big source of revenue for local papers. This is the last, I mean, to me, this is not. Just it's saving a few dollars and it'll be changing. I don't know. We we talked about it during this committee. I'm not in favor of changing it. The mayor actually changed my mind on it when he talked to me about it, and I I just want to make that point. But we did have this conversation a year ago. As far as. The stipend. You can, you can put this on Facebook, you can put it everywhere. I'm not willing to give up a penny of my stipend. Yes, I would have spent $7 million on a pool. I am not giving up one cent of my stipend. There is so much to cut in this budget that we could cut before we touch my stipend. We all work really hard. I am not in favor of giving us a raise. And it was with Chairman Serboni's help and the mayor's help that we took our proposed raise last year. We kept the pool open longer. So I'm not, and we can't give ourselves a raise off cycle in an off year, but. You know, I get with, I get the symbolism of it, but I think it's just symbolism. I just think it's money elsewhere that we could cut. So you can, you can all put that on Facebook and, and you know, not vote for me again. That's fine. That's my two cents on that. Thank you, Chairman.
Done.
All right.
Bam.
You're not muted.
I know.
Yeah. Just checking. Any other questions for the council on the council budget?
No, I'll, I'll jump in. I'll, I'll agree with councillor Fratell. I think there's, you know, for $75 or $100, that's. Not even a measurable amount of the budget and then symbolic and all that. And I, we already, the council, as a, as a councillor separate from us. Hasn't received a raise in, I don't even know how many years. And it's, 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 you know, what we get, if you did out the hours, it's like the low minimum wage and whatever. And we talk about, we need to raise the mayor's money so people are motivated. And I think there's just, there's a lot of other places to really sincerely cut that. And if it came down to it, yeah, sure, let's do it. But it'd have to be part of a larger plan that's all hashed out. And figured out from there. I mean, I'm, I'm almost confident that I'm probably the the lowest paid councillor of the nine of us, just based on our normal jobs or whatever. So it's just like, I don't know, it just seems like a small, just for the sake of it, symbolic thing versus actually making an impact. And I'd rather look at the the hard numbers.
Anyone else before we move on from the council? Councillor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm having video problems. That's the reason why I'm on just by audio. But I just wanted to point out with regard to, you know, the latest comments. When the salary or the stipend for the council was put into place, our world was quite different. You know, there was a lot of. Work being done. We had a secretary doing work for us. You know, today, we're printing out our own stuff. We're getting it by electronic means. We're having to maintain an electronic medium to to get those things. And I just think that things. Have put a lot more weight on our shoulders to be. More administrators really, in addition to being councillors. So I just want to point that out. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I see no more messages. Then we're on to the town clerk. Town Clerk Thompson, you're on.
All right, Town Clerk Thompson's up. I would say, just like the law department, my budget basically stays pretty level and the same year after year. Um. So. My budget did not really change. I'll just go straight to Christina's question. My budget really did not change because of COVID. I did put my land records online, and I just had to pay a nominal $500 extra fee to my land record company for that, which really, when you think about it, was nothing. To get that done. You know, I probably will, I am going to save in, I had $4,000 that I transferred into my election account. For the primary, but now is not happening. And so I will have to come to the council for primary money for August, most likely. I probably won't come to the council for August primary money. I'll just do the primary in August. Because Secretary of State, you know, she's supposedly there sending out absentee ballots. We have to see how the whole thing goes. I'm not in agreement with how how she's looking to work, work at all. So we'll, we'll go through the August primary. We'll see how that's all gonna work. We'll see. What my costs are gonna be because they're looking to do it all mostly by mail, which is definitely gonna be more costly. But we'll see if that's gonna be. My cost or her cost. And then we'll see if I need more money for November, which is gonna be a very large election. And the mayor had already whittled me down pretty tight on my election money when he did my budget with me. And I had already brought my cost down in my land record indexing because I had, I did have a little fat in that money. So I had trimmed myself there. And then the figures from the January 31, where you can see my indexing money and my office supply money looks kind of low. But currently, you know, that's from January. So like, it shows my indexing money was 10,009 in January, but I've already, today I've spent 18,000. And my office expenses, I'm up between 16 and 17,000 already having spent. So I really don't have any extra money anywhere. That's about all I have to say. I'll take questions.
Your first interrogator is councillor Fishbein.
Of course it is.
Hi Barbara.
Hi Craig. Hi councillor Fishbein, I mean.
No problem. Hi, Town Clerk Thompson. Um, the money that was in this budget for the primary.
Yeah.
Where is that reflected in in?
It actually, it's not, because I came to the council. So the election materials and supplies is that. Shows I, I moved, I had 62 and I used 62, and I might have used a little bit more than that, to be honest with you. I think I'm at 73 or something I used. And I only, and I asked for 10, but then we did a transfer. I think it was late February of an extra 4,000. It was just, you know, a kind of guesstimate of I would need extra money for that. Was gonna be an April 28 primary, which then got moved to June 2, which now got moved to August 11, I think it is, if I can remember the date. It's actually, you know, because these sheets are printed, Mr. Bose prints these sheets, you know, I don't know when, but. Does, it doesn't reflect that. It was printed before that.
Okay, so the budget book was issued on April 1, so you're telling me that. The line 56105 is inaccurate with regard to the.
Yeah.
2019, 20 appropriation.
Yeah, I would say that.
Okay, so that should be 14,000?
Yep.
Um. So. I'm just wondering how. If we're shifting that primary, that expenditure to the next budget year. Why that isn't reflected on appropriations in force?
I haven't discussed it at all with Mr. Bose or the mayor. And mostly because, as you know, Craig, well, maybe you don't, but we as clerks have been hoping and praying that it would be canceled in quite all honesty. You know, Bernie Sanders has dropped, dropped out of the race. We kept hoping he was the only name left on the Democratic ballot. We were hoping that he would just. He had to write his letter to take his name off the ballot. We were all hoping as clerks that there would be no Democratic primary. And then we have a Rocky De La Fente. Who is running on a Republican primary only in Connecticut. Total waste of money and time. So we all really just kept hoping. That the, this primary would just basically go away. So now we had a, we had a conference call just last week with Denise Merrill, who has put out her whole plan. For how she's gonna do absentee ballot only for August and November. She doesn't want people going to the polls. That you and I have discussed. And neither of these two people will take their name off the ballot. So we are having a primary now. So we have to go forward with. Doing our constitutional duty and performing the primary. So. Before that, I just, you know what? I've been very busy. I'll be quite honest with you. My office has been inundatedly busy. So I just haven't had time to think about it.
So you anticipate. Coming to the council sometime, maybe in July and having it adjusted?
Not at all. I think I'd like to go through the primary and see how much money I expend. And do a, try to do an analysis. I mean, I know in November, if I base it on 2016, the last presidential primary, we had an 82 to 83% turnout. So I'll have to gauge it on that, and we'll have to gauge it on how much absentee ballots we think they'll will be compared to polling ballots. And who's paying for it? We have to see how all this is working out. It's still a work in progress. Secretary of State is still kind of revealing the plan. We're still waiting for more information to come out. You know, they do everything at the last minute. So I'd rather get through the primary. I have enough money to to run a primary. Plenty of money with money left over, and then come to you after the primary in September for November.
Okay, and the land records going online, you said it costs $500. Is that how much?
Yeah, I mean, that, that was, that's cheap. I thought that was quite reasonable. They took, you know, when you come into my office, they took, caught, took all that information and just put it out there. On the, the, the older site, not the Record Hub site, the, a little bit older site that they have. And it only was a $500 fee, and there's no monthly, monthly, I don't think I pay a monthly fee. So, well, maybe I pay $53 a month.
And then, did they represent to you what it would cost on an annual basis to maintain that system and to update that?
I'd like to go back to them and ask them that because even Chris Luck, our IT guy, thinks that it's a good idea to, that it's safe. And that it's good, and that we should keep it where it is. So I'd like to go back, if the mayor would allow me, and see, see what that would be.
Now, when somebody accesses that system from the outside. They pay a fee. Well, they can, they can access it without paying a fee, but if they want to print actual documents, they pay a dollar a page. Where does that money go?
Well, you know, though, just, just so that people do understand, Craig, by statute, they pay a dollar whether they come in my office or where they do it from their home. Either way, they're paying a dollar for that copy. So let's be clear about that, just from the start. But the dollar comes to us. The town of Wallingford gets that dollar. So when you go on to the COT system, you make, as a title searcher or an attorney or whatever, you make your own business decision. That do you want to pay for per copy, per day, per week, or per month, or or actually a yearly subscription? You can make your own business decision. It's how you want to handle doing it. But we get our dollar per copy.
And as a result of going online, have you seen an increase in that revenue?
I don't know yet. I haven't started receiving. So, you know, Attorney Small. Actually, attorneys, Chairman Attorney Servoni got the thing, the ball rolling, and then he. Had Attorney Small look at it. And so she insisted that we receive checks from COT instead of direct deposits. I haven't gotten one yet, so I have to get one first to see. But my assumption is. So am I getting more money, you think, from it being online than if they were coming in?
Yes.
I don't know. I'm gonna have to wait and see, see about that. But I think it's gonna be pretty equal.
Okay, and I know that by state statute, you're getting the dollar per page presently. And there has been a move at the Capitol to reduce that fee. And the mayor has ta- yeah, the mayor has taken a position against that decrease. Because of the effect upon your budget. Do you know how much revenue? Your budget reflects as far as charging people for documents that should be available under the Freedom of Information Act?
I did, oh, not Freedom of Information, but I do, I do know. Now, a land record is not a Freedom of Information copy, Craig. A land record is a land record that a person gets to do a business transaction. They're doing a title search or something like that. So I disagree with you on that.
Okay.
My, my office, my office in one year brings in about $33,000 to $35,000 in copies for land records. I had to do that analysis for the Town Clerks Association.
Okay, so I'll tell you those documents.
FOI copies are 50 cents a page. It's a whole different, it's a whole different story.
Presently, yes, it is a whole different story. I I got it. But. Open documents is a portion of what we're dealing with here. So do you know how much revenue you get? From charging people for documents that they copy?
Are you talking about land records?
All records. Is that, well, does the budget separate between the two?
My budget doesn't, my budget never. So, you know, a lot of us in town hall, we talk about these things as department heads, like, how much revenue do you bring into the town and things like that? So, you know, your, your budget doesn't reflect that, you know, it, it just shows us how much money we're asking for. And it would be nice in a way if we could show the council, hey, look, this is how much money we bring in. This is how much money we give you. But I, I would have to do an analysis on that. I don't know how much I charge for, I'd have to figure out how much do I charge for FOI? How much do I charge for vital? If you're gonna want, you want to talk copies? Let's start talking about vital copies at 20 bucks. We do more vitals in Wallingford than, oh my God, tons of vitals at $20 a copy. So.
I thought there was a revenue line that reflected. I thought there was a revenue line that reflected.
It's not on my budget page, it's not here for me, I mean, you'd have to ask Mr. Bose that, that's a Mr. Bose question. I don't work in the finance department.
Yeah, town clerk fees are all brought in in one line, I'm just looking at through the budget now, I, I don't have a breakdown as to categories, but um it's something we can certainly put together if the council needed to, to see that, sure, right, Barbara?
I could do it through my COT system, Jim, also.
All right, Mr. Bose, we're, we're, I'm looking at the revenue portion of the budget, where would that be reflected?
All right, hold on, let me get to the page.
What are you trying to get at, Craig?
Well, the mayor is taking a position that it, it would negatively impact the town, and I'm trying to figure out where it's reflected in the budget.
If we were to make it less than a dollar per copy, I, I would agree with the mayor on that, absolutely.
I would not, but, okay, why should you be charging people? Does it cost you a dollar to have that, that document copied if they're doing it themselves?
Craig, they're doing it for a business purpose to, to earn their living, to do a title search or a survey or something like that, they, they, they carry the cost forward to their client, it's all part of doing business.
I, I disagree, but
I don't.
A real estate agent who comes in to look at the land records, to ascertain the meets and bounds of a particular property, happens to make the copy of that particular property description does not charge their client separately for that particular copy, that's.
Everybody has a cost to doing business of their own business, whatever it might be, so if a real estate agent needs a Schedule A, they have to pay a dollar for that and a dollar for the street card, so for two dollars, they have to spend that in order to go make six percent on a home that they sold, what a shame.
Mr. Bose, were you able to find the information?
Yes, it's on page nine of the Budget Binder, under Town Clerk Fees.
The line.
Well, it's all lumped, it's, it's all lumped in there together, Craig.
Well, there's, there's about thirty different lines, just which, which line is it lumped in?
For, for, the last section, four, two, zero, zero, two.
Four, two, zero, oh, okay, I see that.
Sorry about that.
So, and I know we're gonna be dealing with revenue at some, but just, um, Mr. Chairman, would you indulge me a little bit here?
Well, Barbara is encouraging me not to, but that, having said, if you can convince me it's bu- budget related, I'll indulge you.
Oh, certainly budget, I just wanted to ask the Mr. Bose, because I'm looking at a line that shows eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars as revenue to the town clerk's office, and you know, I just, I didn't think that that much money was coming into the town clerk's office, certainly not for copies, so I'm just, you know, one of the large categories that comprise that.
Sure, the, the largest category, and I'm sure Mrs. Thompson would agree, is conveyance.
Correct.
So that becomes a, okay, so convey, okay.
Town chair of the conveyance, that's correct.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, um, Mr. Bose, if, if, if you, I would like to see a breakdown of that, that line.
Or I'll, I'll work with Barbara and we'll get that to you.
That's all I had, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, any other questions for the Town Clerks Department?
Miss, Mr. Chairman, may I also add in, Barbara, when some land records, what is the money that goes into the historical preserve, document preservation fund? That's outside of the general fund by statute. Is there a fee that, there's a fee that you charge for that as well, right? I'm just mentioning that to you, because I'll probably forget it, uh, just to make sure we send all of it to the council, what goes to the general fund and what goes to that statutorily, but that other, uh, special revenue. Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
All right. Moving on from the town clerk, Mr. Hanley, please come out from behind the curtain.
Well, I'm here. Thank you, considering the, the hour, I'm going to dispense with my PowerPoint presentation. To mention, uh, my video signal is pretty poor, uh, putting a lot of stress on my connection here, because we're streaming, we're recording, we're doing a variety of things, so I'm gonna turn off my camera, but I will continue to attempt to speak.
Good.
Uh, I, I had very little to, to uh mention and, and comments, introductory comments, apart from the fact that I recently was looking at our mission statement crafted about twenty-seven years ago, and uh, the, the key, the, the key point is the primary goal of the service is to make local government more accessible and understandable to the residents of Wallingford. Now, a lot has changed in twenty-eight, twenty-seven, twenty-eight years, uh, but that certainly hasn't. The last eight weeks, though, have been a supreme challenge. And I, but I'm pleased to say that we've had uh success in meeting the governor's executive order and regarding the compliance issue of getting meetings out to the public and trying to keep citizens engaged, we're, this is the means, uh, we're reaching people, and uh so far, so good, although tonight, uh, length of tonight's meeting and stream, uh, we'll see what the resulting product is. Apart from that, I did want to mention that, uh, the last eight weeks, uh, one of the, uh, the unfortunate aspects is that, uh, I've been working alone, my, my part timers, uh, haven't worked since, uh, March twelfth. And the reason for that is that, uh, it's close quarters, um, there's real no opportunity for us to work shoulder to shoulder to achieve these things, and I'd certainly love to try to hand off some of this work, but uh, it, it really can't be achieved in our, in our workspaces, uh, hopefully that'll change in the near future. Uh, that's about it for now, for now, if you look at the budget, there's not, uh, there are a few changes, but uh, the changes are insignificant.
Right, Counselor Laffin, you're up.
Thank you, and, and thank you, Scott, so with the going live and all that stuff that you do now, great job. Uh, I know that there's a delay for purposes of, you know, catching things and whatever. Going forward, is this something that, that your current equipment at Town Hall can handle? Or is this something that's managed because it's through go-to, it's recorded differently? I was wondering if you could address that a little bit.
The equipment at Town Hall, we have some capability, uh, with the system, uh, as present, presently constituted so that we can't stream, we would need to have a connection, uh, to the workspace.
Like a hard wire into the space, yeah.
Connect to the outside, um, I'm in the process of, you may not recall from last year's budget, but uh approval was given for replacement of the equipment, and we also received a grant from the state. Uh, I'm in the process of trying to move that, that forward, that equipment replacement forward. It'd be better cameras, better equipment, that capability certainly will be baked in for future use, uh, if approved. The one area that might be a little difficult to incorporate is any kind of, um, capability for someone to remote into the meeting, which has not been permitted in the past, either by telephone, um, or by camera. So I'm looking at that now as, as to what it would take for a redesign, it gets a little complicated, because you have to provide audio and in some cases perhaps a video to those who are seated in the room. Uh, when the time comes that we can perhaps go back to a standard meeting setting, so that gets a little complicated. But uh, I'm looking at that, so we're working toward this, trying to get the project finished by, by summer or during summer. It certainly would have that capability.
Okay, and then is there a savings in time, at least to you, right now, that it's kind of, it's up, it's going live? I know before you used to go through your process and you're adding, I mean, you used to do, you would edit live too, I guess, right, with the title pages and, and labels and stuff? Um, but is there a savings now to the, the way that it kind of uploads immediately versus the time it would take you before a process and and get it ready for, for upload?
It does improve efficiency for, for me, for the office, especially the, the fact that the YouTube stream is automatically archived and available to the public, uh, so I don't have to prepare that, however, uh, we're also simulcasting on the channel and uh, it's through the YouTube's stream. And uh, I've had some difficulty with the server recording, uh, that, so then I, what I'd like usually have to do with these meetings, we've only done a handful so far, is that the resulting recording has to be replaced on the server, because there are dropouts, there are some things that corrupt that recording on the server, so I'm still doing that work the following day, so, uh, so it's somewhat improved. It's, it's better than expected, but it's certainly not perfect, I can say this, though, that I was able to achieve all of it without uh, any additional expense. Uh, I know that some laptops and some equipment was purchased
Yeah.
for, for the boards and commissions, but I had the equipment in place to do it.
Great.
Yeah.
Good, and then are you, for the most part, are you at, are you, you're not in Town Hall, you're over on Churchill Boulevard?
I'm in Fairfield Boulevard, Fairfield Boulevard, yes.
Yeah, okay. That's it for me right now, thank you, thank you, Scott, and uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Testa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, hi, Scott, how you making out?
Bumping along.
A little separate from yours, specifically to your budget, uh, numbers, but someone raised an issue to me about all of the accumulating tapes that you have from past meetings and how and when we would be transferring those, you know, so that they don't get lost, is there, can you speak to that? In any way, shape or form, and now there might be a, a requirement in a budget for su- such work?
We have not set up a, a process to convert all of the tapes prior to DVD recording. As you know, or may know, uh, we've been recording, uh, to, to file, files and to DVDs. And uh, prior to that, it was all to tape, uh, there was a brief time when it was tape and DVDs. So the tapes go back, some tapes go back to the, uh, to the early nineties, the mid nineties. We have been making copies, uh, upon request, if someone identifies a, a meeting that can, may contain some information that, um, will be beneficial, we can make a copy. But we have not set up a program to, to, uh, to archive all of them on digital media. There are a lot of tapes.
Do you know of any potential records, or, you know, record law situations that could come up? If we lost any of those?
Excuse me, I've been advised that, uh, we really don't need to retain these recordings, uh, much past six months. Uh, and uh, Attorney Small, um, might wanna revisit that, but, um, we've retained them for a variety of reasons. And historical value, um, certainly, I, I know that there was a, um, a case the town was involved in where one of our recordings helped in that case. The town was able to go back and look at some comments that were made on the record, and it was beneficial, so you know, I've just always been of the mind that if we have the space to retain recordings, then we should try to retain them uh, rather than throw them out.
Would it entail, do you have an idea what kind of expense would be involved if you were to transfer all of those over to a digital recording?
The, the expense is time, uh, certainly the tapes, uh, those recordings, the transfers would have to be done in real time. Um, and you may recall that, uh, mixed in those meetings are two-hour meetings, three-hour meetings, some six-hour meetings, so there's, there's quite a bit, it would have to be systematically done day in, day out, uh, and a part-timer would have to address that. It, it's a task.
Thank you very much, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, up next, Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, hi, Mr. Hanley. Um, first of all, I just wanted to, to thank you for your work, because it's, um, kind of partially how I got involved, so I would always watch, um, the meetings with my mom on TV and, um, she's probably watching now, so hi, mom, if you're watching. So thanks for, for that, it's a great service and I really appreciate it. Um, and kind of same question I've just been asking everybody, um, I know you said with the pandemic that you, the part timers have not worked since March twelfth. Um, so I'm assuming, you know, unfortunately, it's at their expense and they're wonderful people, but um, I'm assuming there's some savings because of that, and then my second question is just if you could save one percent, which for you looks like it's about fifteen hundred dollars. I, I see your budget actually went down this year, so I'd hate to even, to even ask, but I was wondering if maybe the office supplies line, if it could come from there, because that looks like maybe you haven't spent quite that much, so just your thoughts on that, please, thanks.
Uh, yes, they're, they're, fifteen hundred dollars is, is not a great deal, um, I, I suspect that the, the line that may be able to give up fifteen hundred dollars is actually the, uh, the, the part timeline. Uh, as we move into, uh, the next budget year, I'm not entirely sure how we'll be doing meetings, so that may be an area. There also potentially could be an item, one, one capital item, um, that could be shaved off. The, uh, the, the changes in the, you, you touched on the fact that I haven't spent the money. That's largely, has largely to do with the fact that I was on medical leave bri- briefly, and uh, also, um, we're so busy. I'm the only person in the office, so I'm the, the chief engineer and the administrator and whatever else, so I make coffee too. So it's, uh, sometimes I get behind on purchases and trying to, you know, look at what we need for supplies, everything from hard drives to, um, paper for the, the printers. So that's why usually this, there's a flurry of activity about this time of year when I'm trying to catch up. This year is even more difficult because of all of the other demands that, uh, this, uh, the pandemic has brought upon the office. So, and I'm not able to hand things off right now, so it's, uh, it's, it's particularly, uh, it's particularly difficult. I would say that, uh, that the fifteen hundred dollars can be achieved. Even though the budget is tight already.
Great, th- thank you so much, I, I appreciate that, um, just in case that's the route we go, um, I appreciate your honesty, and like I said, I mean, your budget is one of the only, I think, that's, that's actually lower, so, um, I appreciate it and I appreciate everything you're doing, I know you're short staffed, so, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Shortell.
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Saldamarko. So I'm gonna go the other direction, Scott. How much would it cost to televise ordinance committee?
At Town Hall or in this fashion?
No, I'm, I'm, I, let's, let's, let me, let me, let me, before, before the mayor gets on, let me qualify my, let's say for, uh, hypothetically, for like next year, like twenty twenty-one, don't eat, I'm not the year from now, I'm just curious how much it would cost, I'm not even, I, it's more of an academic question, I'm not even really proposing it, I'm just curious.
I believe that, uh, the, the budget, um, could absorb that. Providing, uh, you choose not to have, uh, four to five hour meetings.
Well, that's up to Counselor Fishmind, but thank you for, for that, um, yeah, I mean, I, I think it was, you know, before before COVID, it was something, I, I may have been a comment to Chairman Servoni or Vice Chair Laffin. You know, we have money, so yeah, I mean, hey, it'd be great to televise it, uh, just because it's, I think we do some important work there that without time it gets to the council, uh, it's similar to the Board of Education, where the board, a lot of the work, the heavy lifting on the Board of Ed is done in instructional committee, most of the council's work is done at the council, but Most of the council's work is done at the council, but but we do get an ordinance. We sometimes kick meetings around, or I'm sorry. We sometimes kick proposed ordinances around for for months, which is a good thing. We we take it seriously and deliberate deliberately, but. Uh, it it just, I just think it'd be a good thing for people to to be able to see. So maybe down the road. Uh, it's good to hear. I I'm not suggesting it. For next year, just someday. Um, I just want to thank you for all you're doing, especially for, uh. You know, it it to echo what other people have said, just how you've, uh. Working with Chairman Servoni, how you made these meetings available to the public, uh, in a short timeframe and and, you know, it's appreciated. So thank you for everything. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions, comments for? Government TV. I see no requests in the comment bar, so. Mr. Hanley, don't go anywhere. You're not done yet, but.
All right.
No more questions for you. All right, last one for the night is the program planning budget. Do we have anybody from the department?
Well, I I'm here for the department.
Okay.
Given that, uh, we we really, the department really reports over the mayor's office. There's a variety of activities that go on there. And we have not replaced, um, Rose's position.
Okay.
So, just in general, uh, the department. Department handles each type of activities, um, acts as, uh, a contact with the. MSW, the transfer station, the five town project. Handles the recycling reports to the state of Connecticut deep. Uh, is is our contact with the hazardous waste program. We ask for volunteers. Hazardous waste is taken down to the Water Authority in New Haven. And we pay for our share of of, uh, the costs of disposal. Handles the adopt the road program. It's. Secretary is in that office assisting on grants. On website, oversight of the town website and his staff to the Economic Development Commission.
Thank you. Questions for the Program Planning Department budget? Counselor Tata.
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Hi.
Um, once again, I'm just trying to see if we can find one percent and, um. I noticed this budget is already, um, significantly less than it was last or in the current year. It looks like most of that was from, um, an internet consultant, so, um. I noticed there's already savings there. So to get maybe another thousand dollars, it looks like. Possibly office supplies might might be. A little low. Maybe we can get it from there. What are your thoughts on that? And then also, if if this department has saved anything during the pandemic. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not aware of any, uh, significant savings. I I think. I I I can't right now tell you that there's a thousand dollars there. It is, it's, it is a very lean budget. I do want to mention, however, with regard to. The appearance of many of the budgets, if you look at the personnel pages, you'll see that, uh, salaries are to be determined because. Many of them are tied to. To, um. Like the bargaining agreements that haven't come to a completion. So certainly, um, management or non bargaining and program planning would be a lot of non bargaining. They would be tied to a lot of other contracts that haven't been concluded. So. There's no, no increase on any salaries for that reason. The other thing I want to mention is, uh, and. We're seeing, I think at this point, it's about fifty thousand dollars on, on, uh. Unemployment. That the town is paying and there's nothing in this budget coming up for unemployment. But, uh, most of it, I believe, is from, uh. People who have who conducted the programs for Park and Recreation Department. And I, the last report I saw was somewhere around fifty, fifty thousand dollars, uh, that has been paid out thus far this year. So, um. That will probably continue to be a cost going into this next year. I'd say definitely because it doesn't look like the case of any reopening would. Have its increasing employment and we may, we may be, uh, involved with furloughs or layoffs with additional. Positions depending upon what happens.
Jim Hutt will have an update as time comes next week.
Yeah, Jim Hutt, you can ask Jim Hutt, he would have the update on what we're we're paying on the unemployment. But right now, and let me check with the office, but. Uh, it is, it is lean. Um, and I I can't be sure right now.
Okay, thank you. And, um. I don't want to get get too off, um, off topic here, but in regards to the unemployment, I know, um. I'm not sure if it works exactly the same as business. So I know in business, your rate is calculated annually based on, um, your claims. Is, and I'm assuming that's not how it works municipal because you already know what the cost is. So can you just explain how the unemployment works?
I can, yeah, I could, I could, uh, give you a a brief, uh, description, uh, and would Jim Hut to correct me next week during his time. But, um. There are basically i- in the state of Connecticut, two ways that that you can, uh. Take care of unemployment. Uh, the one is the one you mentioned, based upon premium. Uh, there's another way which is commonly called the pay as you go way. Basically reimbursing the state when you do have layoffs. Most municipalities utilize the pay as you go because frankly, we we don't have huge layoffs. Uh, so to to have that payroll tax, uh, which is only employer driven, not employee, uh, would be kind of, uh. Waste of money, um, in in normal circumstances. Now, what happens, uh, and Jim Hut can fill in the details, but there's a look back period. So what the mayor was talking about a moment ago. With regards some of the, uh, recreational folks, many of those are part time. Um, and and what happens is there's a look back period, I give it a year. And then there's an assessment done and a computation done by the state of Connecticut to then, uh, bill, uh, for each person. The the actual bill from the State Department of Labor has each person and the weeks that they were paid. For those issues, uh, or for the amount that they're paid and the amount that now you have to reimburse the state of Connecticut for. Oh, that's the program that we have used for for many, many years. And frankly, I I believe, I I'm going to say most municipalities. I don't want to say all, but, um, the ones when I was in public accounting. Uh, gosh, I must say, maybe fifteen, eighteen clients, uh, I think they all use the pay as you go method.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the Program Planning Department? There being none, that is all the business on the agenda for this meeting. And so I will be turning off the recording and calling this meeting to a close. Have a good late night, everyone.
Evening.
Good evening.